Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the work session on February 20th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the One Nation, Under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for purposes of rebroadcasting. All board members are in attendance. Next is recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, President Kankrow. This evening, we have a number of speakers. First, I'd like to introduce Ms. Whitehouse and Mr. Latari, teachers at Methacton High School that are here to introduce students as part of the presentation on esports.
All right, I'm Mr. Latari, Nick Latari, one of the co-sponsors of the Esports at the High School. My special ed teachers and Ms. Whitehouse, one of our English teachers.
Hello, I'm Ms. Whitehouse, 10th grade English teacher, and I'm one of the co-sponsors. And we're really happy to be here tonight. Our students have worked tirelessly to put this presentation together. Louis actually just flew in from California, so they are dedicated and ready to do this. You guys got it? Thank you for giving us this time.
Thank you, Mr. Latari and Mrs. Whitehouse.
I'm Dominic Abrigato. I'm in 11th grade, and I'm the president of the Esports Club.
Hi, my name is James Kinghorn, and I'm the vice president of the Methacton Esports Program.
And my name is Louis Lampy, and I'm the treasurer of the Esports Club. And our sponsors were aforementioned Ms. Whitehouse and Mr. Latari.
What we are requesting is an official club status for us to raise money, a space for our club to meet, and $51,000 to $65,000 for funding.
Of cour- of course, to make a decision, you need to know what esports is. Esports is a form of team-based competition utilized in video games compared to, for example, when I play Mario-related games by myself. Esports can be defined as a competitive gaming where collaboration and communication are key to success and is played on various games like Valorant or Rocket League. The status of the Methacton Esports Program currently has more than 20 students regularly attending esports meetings every Thursday, where individuals bring personal gaming systems to play together. The Esports Self-Interest Group has set up one school-wide tournament so far with more planned on the way. And currently, some students are working on an esports logo for the team. Right up here on screen, we have two previous examples of esports posters to develop interest in the Methacton Esports Program. On the left is the signup form for students to join Methacton Esports Program. On the right is the signup form for the Methacton Esports Program's first tournament.
So some of the benefits of having an esports team here at the Methacton High School is collaborative opportunities, exposure to STEM activities, perseverance and focus, and of course, the major one, scholarship opportunities.
Of course, to even think about starting an esports team, we need the equipment. And we were, we looked for a very long time to find some of the best equipment available. The computer specifically is the one used by local schools, specifically Norristown. Along with this, we plan to include accessibility options for students who may be physically impaired. Our target for the amount of computer setups, which is all the equipment, is 10, which would equal around $51,000. After maintenance costs and such, it will be around $65,000. And we believe this is important because having 10 allows a lot of flexibility in the games we're playing in the league as well as maximizing really the reach of the like club to as many people to allow to play. That estimate did not include ongoing costs such as money for coaches, uniforms, upgrades, and transportation fees. Some of the money for, some of the ongoing costs could be offset by doing more club fundraisers, such as the tournaments or more traditional fundraisers, such as a car wash or a bake sale. And to place this, some examples of other schools that have it situated is Norristown. As you can see, the same computer we wanted to pick out. And this is in the library, which allows for a very connected feel, very open and around the school, opposed to the Concordia Lutheran High School in Indiana, which has a more built-out, very specific space. So if we were to pursue this club for many years, this could be a possible endpoint for that.
So for our future plans after we get this equipment is to join the PSEL, the Pennsylvania Scholastic Esports League, find future tournaments for us to join, continue to play games as teams or individuals to prepare for competitions, and to continue to find more people to play for us and maximize our student reach. So I mentioned the PSEL earlier. The PSEL is the Pennsylvania Scholastic Esports League. Several schools in our areas such as Norristown, Downingtown, and Central Bucks compete in this league. And this league is led by Chester County IU. Some of the games played in the PSEL during this year's school year, during fall, League of Legends, Rocket League, Smash Bros., and online chess. And this spring is Valorant, Rocket League, and online chess. Though this will not be the same games as next year, we can use this to determine how we're going to schedule practices and games next year if we are able to join at that time. So scholarships are one of the major things we're looking at for Methacton, giving students of Methacton High School scholarship opportunities. Millions were awarded in scholarships over 250 colleges, over 16 million in 2020 to 2021, and rising has been made from esports. Important things that recruiters look for is in-game communication, team play, and attitude, specifically a positive attitude. You may get knocked down, but you need be able to keep going in these games.
And those are some important skills that can lead to careers. Careers you might want to pursue in the esports field are as the following: professional esports player, esports coach, esports referee, or college recruiter. To attain these careers, you need a variety of skills such as having learned computer-related skills and communication, which will help you be able to cooperate and collaborate with teammates. If you are unsure what will, you will succeed in the esports field, some related careers are computer programmer, software developer, or video game developer, using the skills you have learned from the esports field.
With this club, we would really like to maximize student reach, including those who are physically disabled, as well as esports as a whole is very inclusive and we would, because of the way it is structured, the, it allows for a lot of freedom in who gets to play what and as many, having a lot of people around at the same time, actually. The PSEL specifically allows for up to four teams for one game to be submitted, which even allows for more situations. So if we have a varsity, junior varsity, subs for those teams, that equals a large amount of players to encourage this team-based attitude.
In summary, we believe esports will benefit the school. So what we are asking for is official club status approval, space for our team to operate, and $51,000 to $65,000 investment to get us started. Thank you for your time. If there's any more information we can give to help you guys make your decision, please ask.
Thank you very much. Well done. Let's give our students a round of applause. Before we go on and take questions, I know that members of the board probably have some questions. I just want to bring reference to one of the agenda items that will be before you next week, and that is listed on page seven of nine under other, it says esports. To approve esports as an official club in Methacton High School and authorize the administration to proceed with securing space in the high school and associated equipment, materials, and supplies for team competition to commence with the start of the 2024-25 school year. So in terms of the details that are associated with that, I can tell you at this point, the Methacton Education Foundation has committed to funding this program up to $50,000. So with that, it puts us in a great position to make esports a, an opportunity for, as the students had mentioned, for all students here in Methacton High School. With that, I want to now turn it over to the members of the board for questions for the students. Anyone to my right, Ms. Clary?
Gentlemen, good job, really good job. You gave me everything I needed. I actually have a question for the administration, if that's possible. Have we looked into whether grants are possible to help with the funding in addition to any monies that are going to come from the Methacton Education Foundation?
We certainly are in the process of having that conversation. The first step in really kind of formalizing this is to create club status and then to allow us for the next several months, not only to, you know, seek funding, we also need to determine, you know, where is the proper spaces in the high school as well as how to properly fit that space for competitive use. But certainly, that'll be part of our process.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, thanks, guys. Again, at the Education Committee, I actually don't remember if I asked this, so I'm going to ask it again. If approved, do you believe you can get into the PSEL next season?
Yes, if we do get the funding and resources we need, we'll easily be able to get into the fall season next year. This spring season, it's too late to sign in, but Mrs. Whitehouse has already started talking with the leader of the PSEL.
Thank you.
Ms. Graff?
Yes, that was a great presentation, so thank you very much. I just had a couple of questions. You had mentioned there were a couple of local teams, Norristown, Downingtown, I think, and Central Bucks. Are there other teams that you would compete with?
Yes, those were just a few examples. There are a lot of other teams in the PSEL.
And the other thing I did want to mention is I was recently on a college tour, and they have an esports auditorium that's dedicated, and it's really a growing field for colleges and recruitment. So I definitely applaud you guys thinking ahead in terms of scholarship opportunities for the students at Methacton. The other question I had was, how many students are there on a team typically?
So that depends on the game. In a Rocket League team, it would usually be most competitive scenarios, 3v3. Smash Bros. is also 3v3, but that uses switches, so we can use that based off to do practices. We can utilize the fact that that uses switches. In other competitive games like Valorant, I know that is a 5v5, so we'd have five people per team in games like Valorant and Overwatch.
And you're saying you would have five on a varsity team and then potentially five additional on a JV team plus subs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry, I'd like to add real quick, we can also, the PSEL allows four teams, so that's five players. So that's actually 20 players we can have submitted at a time.
Great, thank you.
Questions to my left, Ms. Kankrow?
I want to first thank you very much. You did fantastic, so I'm very proud of the students here at Methacton, so thank you for your presentation. I do love the fact that this is in, I do support this. I love that it has all abilities in this, but it also focuses on where we are strategically as a school board, as a district, for steam, and I think it's a great opportunity for us. I, I do think the student outreach, I think you're going to see an increase. And I think as we, come back to us each year to give us status to know where your growth is and asking for additional funding is important. So let's definitely check in on you if this does pass in the year. And then the other thing I would tell you is that I do know personally Methacton education, the Methacton alum who is in college that got a really great scholarship. Reach out to your alumni because they are really involved already out there, and I'd love for them to come in and connect. So even if we could, if you could reach out to the career counselor and discuss also with, talking to the alumni, I think we could really get some great outreaches of different colleges that you could get exposed to and just drive the interest even higher. Because I did hear there is one particular student that's very successful right now in college, so.
We're actually in contact with him right now.
He's very successful, and he's making quite a bit of money. So I, I think we should put him as an alumni spotlight for you and, and reach out. Thank you. Good luck.
Ms. Kankrow, as you were speaking, I saw Ms. Strauss was shaking her head. So I know they're definitely making the contact with the team. I do want to say thank you very much because this, your team in general, when you presented at the committee, and I know you had other members also join you, you did a great job with the presentation. I think the materials provided to us have all the right information, so I do want to applaud you. We ask you to come back to present it to the board, and I think you did a great job also, so thank you very much for your time. I know there's a lot of interest, I mean, even going back a few years ago for many parents and also students in our community. So I think along with Ms. Kankrow's point, you may start to see a really big interest in this. So I think it's something that we have to think about. And if, as we see there's a bigger need, maybe do touch base with us again as we continue this journey. So thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Austin?
Hi, thank you so much for coming and presenting to us. So that's a lot to do, to come and present to a committee and then to the full board. So thank you for taking the initiative to do that. I just have a question really about the number of units that you're looking for, and that is you're looking to fund 10 units, and you're saying you consistently have 20 players. So can you explain to me how players share or if you need maybe more? And also, how long those units are expected to last?
That's a very good question. So like at a single time, you would have one person per computer, but if we're hosting multiple practices in a week, you would be able to share a computer. So that could be up to even four a week. That's already 40 people, plus people who play on Switch, which doesn't use computer for Smash Bros., that could be another 10, 15 people. And we believe the computers would last like five to seven years. And because of the modularity, we can just replace the parts that get worse. So it's not going to be like another 5,000 to get a new computer each time.
Okay, so there are components that could be replaced to keep them up to date with your needs. And you're saying each station could be used by multiple different students during a week or during a rotation of practices? And so you could accommodate really as many, as, I, I'm trying to understand if you will be able to accommodate as many students as there could be interest once this club is started?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And also quickly, to answer your question about the 20 students currently in the interest group, currently, we do have 20 students just playing games on their switches, but I've reached out to several friends, and once we do get the computers and everything, they'd definitely be willing to help us play in the competitive-based games.
Okay, that's great. So you're foreseeing really much more substantial interest in this club if approved? Thank you.
Any final questions, Ms. Perdue?
And I'm sorry, I said, Mrs. Strauss, Mrs. Whitehouse. I do also want to thank the sponsors and thank you for bringing this to us and preparing the students for the presentation. Thank you.
Any final questions, any comments? Ms. Whitehouse, Ms. Latari, and students, thank you so much for being with us this evening, and this will be on the agenda for the board's consideration at next week's voting meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Next on the agenda under guests and scheduled speakers is the Communication Department Recommendations. Ms. Kelly, the coordinator of communications, is here this evening to make a presentation to the board. Just like the previous presentation, there's a copy of that presentation in paper format for the board members at your table. Plus, we'll be sharing that presentation up on the screen. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi, and good evening, everyone. Good evening, board directors. As Dr. Zerbi mentioned, my name is Amanda Kelly, and for the past five years, I have served as the Communications Coordinator for the Methacton School District. So thank you for the opportunity to present to you all tonight about an essential aspect of our school district's operations, communications. So in this presentation, I will be sharing recommendations for consideration that have emerged from a comprehensive communications audit conducted by the Chester County Intermediate Unit. Following the audit overview, I will share the key recommendations identified as necessary areas of improvement in addition to staffing, department structure, and costs. So on page three, the board is asked to consider two recommendations. The first at the voting meeting next week is to approve the job descriptions for Coordinator of Communications, revised, Marketing and Digital Media Specialist, this is a new position, Communications Assistant, this is revised, and Student Communications Intern, this would be a new position. At the March voting meeting, the board is asked to approve a branding consultant to assist the Methacton School District with formalizing brand development and messaging. So as we move on here, in April of 2023, the district underwent a communications audit process that was conducted by the Chester County Intermediate Unit, also known as the CCIU. A report of the review was provided in June of 2023. The CCIU's analysis concentrated on the operational efficiencies of the district's communications department. Its three objectives were to provide an operational assessment of the current communications efforts and the effectiveness of the overall program, to identify gaps in the Methacton School District communication strategy, and to recommend operational efficiencies and communications best practices. So the audit report outlined six recommendations. Formalize the communications plan, strengthen the Methacton School District brand, engage in strategic internal communications efforts, streamline and leverage strength of our social media, maximize our website presence, and streamline our communication. I will provide a summary of each of these recommendations in the subsequent slides and share what work has already been addressed. So as related to the recommendation to formalize the district's communications plan, the desired outcome is to ensure consistency, clarity, and an alignment with our overarching communications goals. So what have we done so far? Our communications plan now includes strategies identified in the communications audit, and it also includes recommended strategies to improve school spirit and recognition that were identified by our district employee council. The report recommended we establish a written communications template. That work had already been completed, and you can see an example of that plan on page seven. It outlines the strategies, tactics, frequency of communications, timelines, person or persons responsible, target audience, and goals. We are currently working on establishing points in time to review and evaluate the communications plan. We have completed the development of a crisis communications plan. This work was done in collaboration with our assistant superintendents, Dr. Sorgini and Dr. Regina. It outlines the responsible parties related to internal communications onsite, internal communications off-site, external communications with families and the public, and external communications with emergency services. The audit also suggested that we review the capacity of the communications office. The audit also suggested that we review the capacity of the communications office. The office currently consists of myself and a communications secretary. In order to reach the desired outcomes to make strategic improvements that were presented in the audit, some staffing changes would need to be considered. And that information is to follow in greater detail later in this presentation. So on page eight, there you see a snapshot of some of the current tactics we deploy as part of our communications plan. It consists of producing from concept to completion, printed marketing materials, videos, newsletters, web articles, developing special events and outreach opportunities to connect with community members who do not have students in our schools currently. The newest item is What's Brewing: Coffee and Conversations with Dr. Zerby, where the superintendent meets residents at local establishments and at the senior living communities. Dr. Zerby shares information about our district, our schools, and initiatives, and the public can ask questions and have an open discussion with the superintendent about any topic. The second audit recommendation is to strengthen the Methacton School District brand. Our brand is not just a logo or a tagline, is a reflection of who we are as a community of schools and what we stand for. Through targeted messaging, storytelling, and visual identity, it is recommended that we cultivate a strong and recognizable brand that resonates with our stakeholders and instills pride in our community. So how do we do that? The audit report suggested we initiate a stakeholder brand survey, create a branding workshop, formalize the Methacton School District brand and key messaging, and create a formal brand guidelines document. We would look to complete these items by establishing a district committee and seeking the support of a third party consultant to assist. Additionally, we will look to incorporate the newly developed key messaging into our storytelling. Brand ambassadors would be staff, students, families, and community members who can assist at the peer-to-peer level in reinforcing the Methacton School District brand and invisibly serving as positive extensions of the brand into the community. The third recommendation suggested we engage in strategic internal communication efforts to foster collaboration, transparency, and a sense of belonging among our staff. It was identified that we needed to prioritize staff communications, partner with staff in initiative communications, increase our school business communications, which are district goals, progress updates, financial information, and associated impacts, that we offer external-facing employee recognition, that we provide an outlet for sharing of building level, grade level, and individual news and accomplishments, and also encourage more cross-building communications. We'll continue to seek input from the district employee council in many of these areas. The fourth recommendation suggested that we streamline and leverage the strength of our social media. In today's digital age, social media is considered a powerful tool for communication and engagement. It was suggested that we consider consolidating the various district and building level social media accounts and designate target audiences and strategies related to those social media channels. Both of these items require further development. The next suggestion would fall under the duties of a newly created position, the marketing and digital media specialist. This role would support the development of a year-long editorial calendar to provide a schedule on key themes, events, and recognitions for each month that can help drive branding and value-added content. The individual in this role would also use a social media management tool to keep all of the content organized, ensure that it is timely, incorporates best practices, and follows all established branding guidelines. The fifth recommendation suggests that we maximize our website presence by enhancing the functionality, accessibility, and aesthetics of our website. Our current web content provider is Blackboard. The company was acquired by Final Site in September of 2022, and the Blackboard platform will sunset in June of 2025. The audit suggested the district transition to the Final Site platform to either maximize the existing site or to consider a completely new design. Regardless of, regardless of the path we choose, the audit reported several non-negotiables. We must develop a stronger banner image or produce a video that strikes the emotional connection to our district and schools and tells our story. We must use images of students, staff, families, classroom action, activities, and other scenes to help tell our story. And we must keep our district and building websites maintained with up-to-date news, information, and events. And finally, the sixth recommendation suggests that we streamline our communications by defining communication roles and expectation, and by increasing the impact and understanding of the information we share through the development of more visual communications. For example, through the use of infographics or photos with key messaging. It was also suggested that we create a communications grid of existing channels so targeted audiences know where to go for that information and to maintain consistency in that expectation. So following a review of the audit, it was determined, we determined that there are five key focus areas of improvement. We need to address the recommendations in the communications audit. It is necessary for the district to build and maintain school spirit as well as consistently advance our brand. We need to leverage analytics to make informed strategic decisions. We need to execute timely publications, whether online, in video, or in printed materials to tell our story of pride. And we need to form a communications advisory committee, which will provide feedback on this work as part of an ongoing process. To address the recommendations of the communications audit, the board is asked to consider a reconfiguration of the communications office structure, communications coordinator, communications assistant, marketing and digital media specialist, and student communications intern. A summary of the duties for all of the communications proposed office positions are outlined on the next slide. So here on page 16, this is the proposed structure. The communications coordinator would continue to serve as the administrator of this office with two support personnel and two student interns. The current communications secretary would be re-titled as communications assistant, and this individual's role remains consistent to the, to where they are today. The proposed addition of the marketing and digital media specialist position would address many of the recommendations and strategies born from the audit. The student communications interns would provide photographic and video support to the communications office in collaboration with the high school TV studio. On the next slide, you will see costs for the department budget this fiscal year and the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. This year, the total department budget is $578,395 and includes two staff in addition to the budget for the Office of Communications and the Office of Community Education. The proposed department budget for the 2024-2025 school year is $563,296, and that includes three staff, two interns, and the budgets related to the Office of Communications and the Office of Community Education. So on the next slide, it provides a timeline of this process. This presentation and job description recommendations were presented to the board president and board vice president on February 9th and to the finance committee last week. As referenced in our timeline, should the board approve the job descriptions at the voting meeting next week, the district branding committee would convene, and the committee would, among other tasks, help advise our work through a review of the communications audit and communications plan, as well as assess the services of a brand consultant that would support us through this proposed process of improvements. The vendor recommendations, associated costs, and intended outcomes would then come before the March finance committee, and if allowed to move forward, would come before the full board for approval at the voting meeting on March 26. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Well done, Ms. Kelly. Thank you. Just with the board's reference before we take questions for Ms. Kelly, on the agenda on page four of nine, under item 10C, are the four job descriptions with which Ms. Kelly is referencing. Those will be for your, your approval at next Tuesday's meeting. So those are outlined, there are attachments on the agenda. And, and really, the recommendation, just to be clear, it's, it's a two-step recommendation. If in fact you are going to approve the, the, the job descriptions, we would then, after approval, you know, begin seeking advertisements for the, the new position, as well as working with the high school to secure interns for, for supporting the, the department. In addition, we have already formed an internal committee, will, will form an external committee in order to advise the department on the selection of a third-party consultant. And that will then recommendation should come before you in March. Please know that we estimate at this time, it'll probably be between $70,000 to $90,000 for all that work. It'll take probably six to eight months, based on our existing understanding and review conversations with multiple vendors. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to the board for questions. Members of the board to my left, Ms. Austin.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kelly, for this presentation. I have a question without the, I, I did review the job descriptions at the finance committee, but without them in front of me. Something that struck me when I'm looking at the title, marketing and digital media specialist, just is, I'm hearing a lot about the digital media, I'm hearing less just about the marketing. So I just think it's important that that person also be tasked with identifying our target markets, no matter, digital might not be the best way to reach a lot of our target markets in our district. And I think that, that it, that marketing emphasis needs to really come to the forefront. And because it might be paper flyers, it might be a paper newsletter, a poster, something tangible that's not digital-based. And I just think we need to really keep that in mind when we think about our residents and community here.
Thank you.
Ms. Austin, that's a great suggestion. If, if, if there's no objection from the board, I think we're going to update that job description, just add a line or two in there. So if we just take note of that, and then we can work on that, and then repost that for consideration. But that, 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 that is a suggestion that we certainly should be on the job description. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from members of the board? Ms. Perdue?
I, can you give me a little bit of information on, I think for the process they have to establish the district branding committee?
Sure. So the district branding committee is essentially comprised of different stakeholder groups within the district, right? So we're talking staff, whether it's support staff, whether it's administration. And these individuals would be, in addition to, parents, community members, to assist us in this work. So if the board approves a branding vendor for us to, for them to support this work, there's a bit of a process, a discovery process to determine, you know, who our audiences are, you know, what key messaging do we want to deliver to the public, what will resonate with our public. So there's a, there's a pretty elaborate process that goes into that. And we just needed to, as part of, if we're going to work with a, a third-party group, we needed to establish a committee to help work us through that process.
Okay. And I asked that question just because that's coming, I mean, based on your process, that's before the board actually proceed with, that's why I was asking that for clarification.
No matter what happens, we still need this type of committee so that we can do, do, do the work.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cancrill?
No, I just want to thank you for this. I think this was something that when I joined the board, it was identified. When you came on, it was fantastic. And you've worked with us. But there's only so much one person can do when you cover so much in the district. And I mean, I think it's super important to realize that we're a very active district. I think the number of volunteers that are involved, the athletics, the activities that all the way go all the way down to elementary school up through, you know, K's or 12, we do quite a bit. And I think the, just across the events that we deal with, and including our community as much as possible. And we need to expand more and be able to, to let them know all the great things that we're doing. And, and yet you're still tasked with communication internally. And so I think this is a great opportunity for us to just strengthen and share the pride that we have internally and externally to everyone. So I definitely am in support of this. And I thank you for doing this with the audit with Chester County.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any comments, members to my right? Ms. Clary?
Ms. Kelly, I just wanted to, thank you. Great job. Just wanted to make sure I understood a few things. So I apologize if I'm sort of repeating a few things that you said. I'm looking at slide, the cost slide for my reference.
Sure.
The department budget of this year of $150,000 for communication services, dropping down for next year's proposed budget to $20,000, is because that would all be coming in-house? Is that the change?
Primarily, yes. So the 150 for this year would be to bring on as if there was a consultant, a branding consultant, right? So that's what that 150 was for. We're not going to spend all of that 150.
But then, Dr. Zerby, you were saying, I think I wrote down 70 to 90K.
Yeah, it, it, we're estimating at this point in time, but we're carrying in that we will likely have some expenses with the vendor, plus all the, the potential materials associated with the branding process.
I'm sorry. So I'm still, maybe I'm, I'm still confused. I'm being slow tonight. The, the numbers that are presented for next year's budget, does that include your, what you guys are estimating for this third-party consultant?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
So part of it will be, will be, the work, our recommendation is that the work, once approved in March, we will start immediately. And we'll be able to, you know, do a brunt, the brunt of the work in this fiscal year, whereby next fiscal year, we have a carryover.
Got it. And then the final question, which I think is self-evident, but I just want to make sure, you're going to be our coordinator of communication?
Correct.
And your current secretary will become the communications assistant?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Mr. Miss? Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of the board? Ms. Kelly, thank you so much for your time this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Next on the agenda, there's actually two agenda items for guests and scheduled speakers, just for reference. Both of those will be combined into this overall next presentation. So if, if the board would just give me a minute to get to the podium, we'll begin an update on not only the Methacton High School campus planning process, but the recommendations from the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee, and information, new information for members of the board and the public on a potential path forward. Good evening. Good evening. It is my intent this evening to provide an overview of the process for the Methacton High School Campus Planning, to present the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee recommendations, to have our honor representative provide estimates of pre-conceptual options and costs, and to provide a recommendation for the board's consideration at the March meet, voting meeting. On slide three, this process begins with the first step in mind. This step in the, in the planning process is to establish a direction forward, not a final decision, but a decision in the exploration of an available option. Our goal is to develop a comprehensive campus plan. While there are no decisions this month, the, there is a scheduled March 26, 2024 decision on there is a scheduled March 26, 2024, decision on which option should we explore further and why? How long will that exploration take? And how much might it cost? And what is the impact of this decision on the Methacton School District? On slide four, the Methacton High School has a projected need for renovations, repairs, replacements of $69 million in the next five years. We have determined that we need to take a deeper look at the overall challenges associated with the Methacton High School and all of the other campus structures, and to organize a comprehensive campus plan. On slide five, on slide five, the Methacton High School campus consists of property located along German Town Pike, Crevo Mill Road, and Mill Roads in Warrsester Township, and includes the following campus structures: the Methacton High School Building, the District Administration Building, the District Transportation Building, and the Campus Sewer Plan. On slide six, to best accomplish developing a comprehensive campus plan, we must continuously leverage a process whereby we plan, we develop, we implement, and we evaluate along a decision loop. Again, this is a continuous loop. And we are in the planning phase now. We have identified the challenges as outlined in the facilities report, as well as that you'll hear this evening from the final report of the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee. This is a continuous process cycle that can guide us as we seek to ensure that the future investments in the Methacton High School campus support the mission of the district and the vision of our high school and campus for the next 50 years. On slide seven, to gather perspective, the district has been working on this matter for more than two years. Going all the way back to 2016, the facilities condition assessment to our investments of $58 million into a number of our district facilities, including the high school, the realization that we have significant HVAC, or heating, ventilation, and air conditioning issues, and humidity challenges in many of our buildings, and that we made improvements at Eagleville Elementary School and constructed a new Arrowhead Elementary School along the way. On slide eight, we engaged a national third-party company to conduct an updated facilities assessment with conditions. We conducted an administrative review of issues associated with the campus, and we established an updated master facilities plan based on all the district needs. On slide nine, we issued a call for participation on the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee. We held meetings between October and November of 2023. We produced 64 recommendations, some of which you'll hear about this evening, for the board's consideration. And we presented a financial analysis of potential borrowing scenarios in our January 23 board meeting. On slide 10, we issued an RFP for architectural services to assist with our planning processes. We are making a presentation this evening, as highlighted in red. We have public input sessions and a vote on the next step in the planning process, scheduled for this month and the month of March. On slide 11, the District Administration Building has a projected need of $1.2 million in renovation replacements in the next five years. On slide 12, the Transportation Building has a projected need of $330,000 in renovation replacements in the next five years. On slide 13, the Methacton High School has a projected need of $69 million in renovation replacements in the next five years. On slide 14, the total campus has a projected need of $70 million of investments. On slide 15, in summary, the January 23, 2024 financial analysis revealed that the current budget status and the tax impact, given the three borrowing scenarios as listed on the screen. That analysis clarified that the borrowing scenarios are within the district's borrowing capacity, and that there are no requirements for referendum vote to renovate, construct, or borrow under these scenarios. Those scenarios include, number one is the borrowing of $100 million, and the impact of the taxes listed on the right. The scenario two would be $140 million, and that relevant tax increase, per the average homeowner. And scenario three, $180 million, and that's a relevant tax impact. When we go to slide 16, and here's where we begin the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee report. We formed the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee. We issued a call for participation between August 21 and September 14, 2023. We had 149 school community stakeholders, including students, parents, staff, and community members. Everyone who signed up was included on the committee. We took the committee as a whole and broke it down into 11 subcommittees. We had a subcommittee on parking, trapping, and aesthetics, operational costs, accessibility, sustainability, the sewer plant, central administration, and transportation buildings. Subcommittee six had student recommendations. Seven was staff recommendations. We had a subcommittee on campus and building safety. We had the high school auditorium, band room, choral room, and West Ring classrooms, considered Zone One of the existing Methacton High School. In Zone Two, which was Subcommittee 10, had the high school kitchen, the pool, the boiler room, main gymnasium, and Committee 11, the high school art rooms, science classrooms, tech ed classrooms, athletic office, which included in Zone Three, and the LGI principal's office, and math labs in Zone Four. In terms of slide, I believe it is slide 19, we looked at, we provided the following documentations and information. We included accessibility reference guides, administrative brain dump, which is basically, over the last several years, any issues that were brought from the building administration to Central that were of concern, we provided that to the participants. Certainly, we looked into the ability of moving our bus, busing garage and the building to another location. We had a debt analysis reviewed, provided. We looked at each diagram related to each of the zones in the high school. We had a listing of student and staff recommendations done by surveys. Those are listed on the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee website for your review. We gave a listing of green ribbon schools, which relate to highly sustainable schools in Pennsylvania. We looked at a pool study. We had a sewer plant study completed, a student enrollment reports, sustainability reports, traffic studies, and parking maps, among many other documents. This is a sample that we provided to the members of the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee. In terms of slide 20, the committee toured three high schools, including the Methacton High School. We toured Potsville, I'm sorry, Potts Grove High School on September 21, which was a renovated high school. We toured Avon Grove, and we toured Upper Marion, which were both new high schools. We held meetings on the 5th, the 14th, and then on November 2, as listed here on this slide. On slide 21, in the October 14 subcommittee work, we utilized a Scott analysis process, our strengths, challenges, opportunities, and threats process, where a number of questions were asked under each of these headings to help drive conversations of members of the committee. We discussed the documents provided. They provided personal knowledge, experience. They toured additional aspects of the facilities on that day as well. They considered input from members that took the school tours. They also considered input from experts. We had a number of experts, not only our owner's rep, the district architect, the district facilities personnel, civil engineer, district safety and security consultant, myself as well. And then each of the committees were to develop three to five recommendations. On November 2, the subcommittee work had them present the three to five recommendations, and the committee as a whole conducted a prioritization of those recommendations. All of that information and the process can be found on the Methacton High School website under the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee section. When we move to slide 22, we can see that there were 64 recommendations in all that were provided by the committee. The prioritization of recommendations were completed by the participants. All recommendations and subcommittee notes are included in the final report. The final report with the appendix, with all the notes, will be on the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee website following this meeting, as well as this presentation will be on the Methacton High School Campus Planning process, as well as on the board section of presentations on our website. And the final report, as listed, will be found, as noted, on the screen. In terms of slide 23, we will start the actual recommendations. So when, and just as a reference, when you see up at the top, it says 9.1. Nine means the subcommittee, as referenced on a previous slide of the numbered committees. And the one after the period is the first recommendation that was provided by that subcommittee. So Subcommittee Nine, their recommendation one is the one that's being presented here. And I'm sharing with you the top 15 recommendations from, among the 64 that were provided to the board. So this one is, "Build a state-of-the-art facility that will prepare our student body for their current interests and desired careers, inspire our faculty and staff, and engage our community." Each subcommittee has a list of considerations. These are things that they felt were, that were driving the recommendations that are being made. And with that, some of them include, "Our current space limits our ability to showcase the outstanding work of our students and staff, leverage a new space to expand our current offerings and produce top-tier talent, opportunity to expand our thriving arts department and work collaboratively with staff and the community, and provide a positive impact on our property values." On slide 24, recommendation 10.1 is, "Create a standalone athletic wing that contains pool, gym, weight room, locker, team rooms, et cetera, that will allow for parking, accessibility, and visitor management security." Some of the considerations by the subcommittee include, "The athletic activities wing would create easier access for the public spectators and provide security to the rest of the building. Overall size of the cafeteria and serving area is undersized, creating the potential for longer lines and wait times." The next consideration was concerns regarding the Methacton High School Gymnasium and Pool area being limited and outdated, issues with the gymnasium pool, locker rooms and team rooms, and spectator seating, storage, and accessibility for participants and spectators. On slide 25, recommendation 5.3, "To determine the property and capital cost of running the sewer line into Lower Providence Public Sewer System. This is the only option that removes the need for treatment." Currently, and maybe unlike, you know, what's obvious on this campus, meaning the administration building, the transportation building, and the Methacton High School itself, you know, we do have a sewer plant that services the municipal waste from this campus. And that's not common knowledge, but it is something that is an aspect of this campus that this committee felt ought to be removed by moving the treatment to a public service. And some of those considerations include processing sewage, raw sewage in a full-service treatment plant on campus is a safety and liability concern. The subcommittee also thought that, "Connect the Methacton High School Campus Sewer to an existing Lower Providence Township Municipal Sewer System located near the campus property, and eliminate the on-campus sewer treatment plant." And the third is, "New spaces could be utilized for additional parking for staff, students, and sporting events." On slide 26, recommendation 11.3, "Develop a STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math Center for the collaboration and engagement of all students, staff, and the community on the first-floor location with natural sunlight." Some of those subcommittee considerations include the need for a central area for engagement and collaboration for students. The tech ed room is currently on the second floor, limiting the opportunities for students. And there are no windows or sources of natural light for any of our art rooms. In terms of the next recommendation, that would be on slide 27. 7.4 is to provide proper spaces for music program, science program, life skills education, ELD program, technology education program, and FCS, that's Family Consumer Science Program, along with proper-sized spaces and locations within the building for offices and hallways that provide a high level of accessibility and movement. Some of the subcommittee considerations are, "Campus and buildings are antiquated and no longer meet the needs of current or future generations." And the next one is, a consideration is, "Current campus and building limit opportunities for students to achieve." On slide 28, recommendation 6.1 is, "Redesign, repurpose, build large group gathering areas, LGI, cafeteria, auditorium, library." The subcommittee considerations here are, "Lack of opportunity for instructional time, engagement and collaboration, small, old, and dim, and not, do not promote a culture of belonging, pride, poor ventilation, crowded, dark, smelly, and old carpets, furniture fixtures," and the last one is outdated. On slide 29, recommendation 2.1, "evaluate the cost of new construction. Considering the location, where would the new school be placed? And would it allow for uninterrupted classes during construction?" The second one, "Impact of students, impact to the students? Is there any disruption to the students, i.e. classes, activities, sports, et cetera?" The third is, "Sustainability. Can improved sustainability be added to the new building that would reduce ongoing cost or carbon footprint?" The next recommendation would be on slide 30. That is, recommendation 7.1. "Overhaul the HVAC system, that's Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning System, to improve air quality, climate within the building." The considerations include, "The overall learning environment is impacted by the HVAC system. Increase attention focus on instruction with less noise during instruction. Free up resources as staff are currently emptying dehumidifiers during the day." The next consideration is, "We believe a complete overhaul of the HVAC system is needed and would be best accomplished through new construction." On slide 31, recommendation 3.1, "Increase available spaces to, first, bring currently outsourced programs back into the high school, and two, provide opportunities for the development of new programs and supports for all students." The current considerations there are, "The current building cannot accommodate certain programs and courses for students." The second consideration is currently outsourcing programs to the intermediate unit, that's Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. The third consideration, "Loss instructional time due to the transportation to the IU programs." And the fourth one is, "Providing our own programs provide positive outcomes for students and more time with their non-disabled Methacton peers." On slide 32, recommendation 6.4, it says, "Culture. Create open spaces throughout the building with flexible seating options and in consideration of the lunch and learn program." The considerations from the subcommittee include, "There are no spaces that promote this atmosphere, and it does not exist in the current high school format." On slide 33, recommendation 1.1 provides for, asks for additional parking for students, staff, and visitors. The considerations include, "There is not enough parking for students of driving age to be, to have a dedicated spot on campus. Everyone who needs a space should have access to it versus the current lottery system." Another consideration is, "Parking is so scarce on campus that staff have to park along the curb in the lot in front of the high school." Consideration four, "During events such as sporting activities and graduation, there is not enough parking to accommodate the crowds that it draws." And the last consideration here is, "There are so few visitor parking spots that it results in visitors parking in non-parking areas on campus, for example, fire lanes in front of the main entrances." On slide 34, recommendation 5.5 is, "To relocate the administrative building." Some of the subcommittee recommendations include, "Buildings on campus have significant needs that must be addressed..." Buildings on campus have significant needs that must be addressed in upcoming years. The second subcommittee consideration is relocate the administration building to another district facility. And either repurpose the existing structure to non-office-related usage. Or remove the structure entirely and the last one, new space could be utilized for additional parking for staff, students and sporting events. On slide thirty-five, you will see that recommendation eight point one, improve traffic flow on and off campus. For regular day traffic and emergency situations. The single subcommittee consideration is traffic delays arriving and departing from school. Issue is to be exponentially worse during the actual an actual emergency. Slide thirty-six. Recommendation seven point three, create innovative learning spaces to provide more opportunities for collaboration, engagement and authentic learning. Some of the considerations from the subcommittee include the high school is a flagship of our district. Creating a collaborative environment would align with. Life post-high school, meaning work in college. The current setup is inadequate. We need to think and plan for students for of our future. We need to have something that is visually appealing and safe. Increased engagement, achievement and collaboration and increased school spirit and positivity. Slides thirty-seven. Slide thirty-seven has recommendation three point two, which is create an ADA-friendly. Educational environment that provides consideration beyond that of the current code to optimize access and learning for all students. Some of those considerations include campuses spread out and takes up a lot of space. Doorways are difficult to maneuver if you are in a wheelchair. Few bathrooms are accessible for students to completely support themselves and be independent. And the current pool does not have easy access in or out of the pool. That ends the top fifteen recommendations from the total of sixty-four that were provided in the final report from the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee. It is important that with great appreciation to our students, our staff and our school community. For their time and expertise in providing this input and recommendations. As we plan for our future together, it gives me great promise that our community is invested in the future of Mathacton schools. On thirty, on slide thirty-nine. And this this now is no longer the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee recommendation. But the next several slides summarize the pre-conceptual options for the board's consideration. This slide here and I'm sorry, these include a summary slide thirty-nine which lists four pre-conceptual options. It includes slides presented by our owner's representative Josh Greis from Dewey Engineering. That includes pre-conceptual options with estimated timelines and estimated cost. And it includes a slide outlining the priorities identified by the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee and how each pre-conceptual option. Stacks up to addressing those priorities. This slide here, slide thirty-nine represents the four conceptual options. And at a high level, it's showing what is different highlighted in red. From its predecessor option. So for example, option one. Is considered an in-place renovation. Unlike renovations that would be completed in a five-to-ten-year replacement process under a Mathacton Master Facilities Plan. This option one addresses a slightly larger scope. In with an in-place renovation in a shorter period of time, typically three, four, four years. The general difference between option one and option two are highlighted in red to show that we would do about the same work. Between option one and option two, but add a pool and auditorium additions under option two. Option three is more intense renovation, includes the pool and auditorium as shown in in option two. But adds a classroom addition and includes the district admin office inside the high school. And lastly, the fourth option is the option that includes new construction. Before I turn over the presentation to Mr. Greis from Dewey Engineering, I want to clearly make note that. Under all four pre-conceptual options, the following two things are consistent. The first one, that the sewer plant removal and service relocation is recommended regardless of the path forward. And that the transportation building is recommended for in-place renovation regardless of the path forward. I will now turn the presentation over to Josh Greis, our owner's rep from Dewey Engineering, who will go into the detail on the pre-conceptual options. With estimated timelines and estimated cost and the slide showing how each option stacks up to addressing those priorities. Mr. Greis?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby, and good evening, everybody. It's very exciting to be back in front of you guys and discussing some preliminary options and ideas here. And as was stated a few times, this is pre-conceptual in nature, so these are certainly not solutions. These are not not to exceed costs at this point, but we at least wanted to provide an independent look at the program. At what is being sought after in terms of curriculum and safety improvements for the campus. And kind of to give you more of an independent evaluation of some of the options, timelines and estimated costs. So with that, I will jump right into option one, which again is an in-place renovation. So the existing building is actually about three hundred and twenty thousand square feet. So of that, projecting approximately two hundred and seventy-eight thousand square feet of renovations. There are some areas where some of the existing systems can be reused. More notably in the later, most recent additions of around two thousand and three. So some of that scope of work would be reduced compared to the original areas of the building or some of the other areas of the building. So we've provided certainly not the level of detail that would be provided once we get into the design and construction phase estimates. But we did just want to indicate that we have put some thought into this in terms of square foot costs, at least at this point. With some projected soft cost estimates, soft costs being furniture fixtures and equipment, technology-related items. So we did, you know, try to provide a comprehensive overview of what a conceptual budget should include. We've also included some factors for starting from today, how long would that design process take? How long would an estimated renovation or new construction process take? And that's important because we need to factor in some inflation with these numbers as well. Nobody likes to hear that word inflation, but unfortunately, at this point. We do need to make everybody completely aware of timelines and what that impact would be ultimately at the end of the day. So again, about approximately two hundred and seventy-eight thousand square feet of renovation within that existing footprint. We do have a nominal site work number, so there has been some identification of existing. Paving and concrete areas that would be replaced as part of this. We're certainly not going to the extent of recreating roads or parking lots in this option. But we do just have a small site work number included with this. As far as abatement, you will see an abatement allowance carried through every option. Which is hazardous materials, so asbestos abatement. There's ballast, light ballast maybe that would need to be remediated. That at this point is a complete allowance number, so a separate design professional would need to go through the building and provide a complete assessment of. Asbestos-containing materials and where they are, how many there are. And that number obviously would be updated accordingly. Similarly, phasing costs, phasing is going to be a very important term to keep in mind, especially as we talk about renovation options. We don't have a phasing plan or a definite number of classrooms at this point that would be impacted as we move through the building. But we do need to consider the likelihood of modular classrooms. If we're taking over large parts of the building at a time, which would provide you with the most efficiency in renovations. Temporary partitions, how are we going to segregate areas that are under construction against areas that are still being used? So those are the types of considerations again that all need to be factored in and you'll see phasing costs throughout all four options, okay? So estimated hard construction costs and then factoring in the soft costs which include fees for. Your architect, your civil engineer, construction manager, permits, getting through the township land development process. Those are all factors within the soft cost number. At this point, we also do have an estimating contingency, obviously at this conceptual phase without things being well-defined. There needs to be a bit of a factor in there for contingency. Contingencies also would continue, recommended to be continued all the way up through the bidding and construction phase. Especially in renovations, I'm sure you guys are all aware of the unknown. You know, if we're taking down this wall, what might we find behind it that nobody even knew was there, wasn't on the drawing, wasn't on the. On anybody's radar, how do we address that? So let's build in some construction contingency as well. That factor as well is carried throughout the options. So for option one. Design phase duration and this holds true for really all the options we believe at this point. Approximately an eighteen-month duration from today with a design phase. Projecting a construction or in this case renovation duration of about two years. Ultimately, that gets us down, including inflation into the ninety-four million to ninety-eight million dollar range. Okay? I won't be this detailed on all the slides, but I did just want to kind of lay out what is included in all of these options for for each budget. Any questions on that before I continue? That maybe we'll continue throughout? No, okay. Okay, as Dr. Zerby mentioned, option two would provide additions. For spaces that are truly in need, including the pool and the auditorium. So most of the work again would be a renovation of the existing footprint. We do with this option have some building demolition of those spaces. And then a new construction factor going back into the budget, so renovation, square footage goes down, new construction number goes up. We have a site work number now of about two and a half million, which would factor into any work associated with grading. Preparing the area for building foundations. And again, abatement allowance is in there, phasing costs at about five million dollars. Again, an estimate, but factoring in some more disturbance with new construction happening directly around the building. Okay? So under this option with with some of that additional new construction and additional disturbance. That renovation duration projecting out now to about two and a half years under this option. And ultimately, the budgeted range of one hundred eleven million to one hundred and sixteen million. Again, factoring inflation, now that inflation, we said, okay, let's figure low point three percent, maybe high point at five percent. I believe the Bureau Veritas numbers had assumed four percent throughout their numbers. In this case, we just kind of wanted to give a range. Okay, so that's option two, again, additions only for pool and auditorium. Option three really is kind of a hybrid, which would be again renovation of. A portion of the building footprint, but a pretty aggressive demolition and new construction that would be connected to it. So we'd really want to take a look at that original two-story section of the building, how to improve the educational spaces. How to create some of those big SGI rooms or LGI rooms to really start improving the educational delivery. And the coursework that can be provided. So this option here. Would be, I believe, the most intensive in terms of phasing, the most disruptive because we're taking down a good portion of the building. We're moving students around, it would be a very complicated construction process right up against the existing building. So in this case, phasing costs are bumped up to seven and a half million. Factoring in classrooms being taken away and the amount of disruption happening. Ultimately, total projected budget range for range for option three. Is one hundred and forty-seven million to one hundred and fifty-five million. What's also happening in this scenario is that the existing district office would actually be connected as an addition to the building. So rather than an in-place renovation in the existing location, actually moving that facility and attaching it to the high school. Okay? And finally, under option four, which would be a completely new construction option. We do with the discussion with the administration have two options for a new construction. What that would look like. The first would be a facility that is three hundred and eight thousand square feet, so basically what that is at sixteen hundred student enrollment. At about a hundred and eighty square feet per student. And then also factoring in the auditorium space. That would be about a three hundred and eight thousand square foot building. Option B would be. If there is an opportunity that the district would be able to provide every possible educational program that is on the horizon that may be considered. That facility could grow to a three hundred and forty-five thousand square foot facility. That's really, you know, something as we go through the process with the educators, the administrators and certainly the board members. Would have to really drill deep into the program and understanding number of spaces. Size of spaces and do we truly need this size of building? So that's really the 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 difference between the two. Some of the things are a little bit different with with some contingencies. With new construction, I think we can drop some of that design contingency down a little bit. It's certainly less difficult when we're not trying to work around existing systems and structures and equipment. So that that contingency went from five to three percent under option four A. Under four B, we wanted to try to give you the highest end of of some of the ranges. So that contingency did stay at five percent. The other thing that we would just like to note is is the new construction unit cost per square foot at three seventy. Obviously, many factors can affect that. This is a pretty good estimate at this point. Certain key spaces or complicated spaces may certainly exceed that, especially an auditorium. Or even auditorium space could certainly exceed that, but for the purpose of comparison, at this point, just wanted to try to keep that the same. Okay? So again, about an eighteen-month design phase duration. And with these options, construction duration of about two and a half years. Really, the the beauty with this though is the disruption factor and the phasing factor really drops, obviously with new construction. We can keep students in their existing spaces, existing classrooms and build somewhere more remotely. Really to reduce that phasing impact. Okay? So option four A, ultimately that budgeted range of between one hundred and seventy-four million to one hundred and eighty-two million. Again, that's with a three hundred and eight thousand square foot facility. And then up to one hundred and ninety-five to two hundred and four million with that larger facility at three hundred and forty-five thousand square feet. And again, to kind of summarize how that impact, how the options affect or impact the priorities, how well do they meet the priorities that have been laid out? Obviously, with an existing facility and renovations within existing footprints. We're not going to gain the educational improvements or the delivery, the program delivery that we're going to get in later options that would include more new construction or all-new construction. So you know, don't need to go through each one of these items, but but certainly you see the benefit of new construction. We're only limited, there's only so much we can do with improvements to. Circulation in particular to ADA. How friendly from an ADA perspective is the existing footprint or the existing stairwells? Again, with an auditorium, auditorium, there's only so much within that existing space to do until you really start looking into some new construction options. Are there any questions before I turn it back over to Dr. Zerby? At the end, okay?
If it's okay with the board, we normally take questions at the end. That's, yeah, that way, that way, because maybe what I'm going to say in the next few slides helps answer some of that question for you. And then Mr. Gryse and I will be here to take whatever questions we need. But it's also important to recognize that in, in the last slide, it'll be a recap of all the public forums and the opportunities for us to get feedback from the public as well as be able to provide that back to the board, as well as over the next several meetings to answer additional questions. So I just want to be aware of that. So, so thank you, Josh, for that presentation. It, as slide 45 outlines, we've, we've come to the part where we're talking about the goal was to develop a comprehensive campus plan. And with that, on slide six, the decision is to, I recommend that we further explore option four. Why? Because we, because of the 2023 facilities assessment, because the recommendation from the High School Campus Planning Committee, as a result of the financial analysis from PFM or Public Financial Management, our financial advisors and the District Business Office, the presentation here this evening from the owner's representative in estimate of pre-conceptual options and costs, the disruption to the operations, education experience associated with certain options that are made available to you here this evening, and the opportunity to develop a plan to realize our greatest potential for Methacton School community. How long might this take in order to explore option four further? We estimate that it'll take about six months to engage the board-approved architect, owner's representative, and a solicitor as part of the, the discussion, as well as, of course, our, our students, staff, and school community to gather input, to develop no less than three conceptual designs with more defined cost timelines and impact, and to provide a public input process on those concept designs. And then to bring all those recommendations and feedback back to the board at a special meeting in the future. How much will it cost? The six-month exploratory process is estimated to cost between $125,000 to $200,000. With these concept designs, we would also have to do a lot of, I'll call it the verification through the review of soils, all of the, a lot of the civil work to determine that any of the concept designs that we are going to bring forward are actually achievable, given, given what's on this campus and, for example, rock, other, you know, challenges that we might find as a result of that investigation. So it's important that not only do we bring concepts forward that would be considered, but considered achievable within the, that construct. So a lot of that cost would, would be included in, on that civil work. And what is the impact of this decision on the Methacton School District? Well, it provides a direction in exploratory process to develop concepts, to provide greater specificity on the potential comprehensive plan. It doesn't decide that we are going to build a high school or we're going to do new construction. It actually gives us a direction to explore. It gives, it provides us the greatest potential in addressing the challenges that are listed by the things that each of us know about this campus, as well as what's provided to us through the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee. It gives us an opportunity to explore future programming and to optimize the experience for today and for the next 50 years. It is likely the least disruptive to the current and future educational operations program and experience of our, of our students and parents and school community. And it establishes a ceiling of the, of the outcomes with which future modifications can be derived, scaled back, or we can consider alternatives. So with that, my recommendation is for a motion on the March 26, 2024 agenda is for the board to consider approving the administration to prepare recommendations for a comprehensive high school campus plan that engages the board-approved architect, owner's representative, and solicitor, provides no less than three conceptual designs with estimated cost timelines and impact for a new high school, provides for public input on concept designs, and provides recommendations and feedback to be presented at a special meeting in the future. As I mentioned just earlier, the, between now and the vote on March 26, there are the following opportunities for us to gain feedback. When I say us, I mean for the public provides feedback and for you to hear that feedback. Starting on February 26, we will open an online public feedback forum. That's, you know, through our, our district website. Ms. Kelly, our communications coordinator, will, will manage that process. On February 29, we'll have an open public forum here at the high school library. Again, on March 11, we'll have an open public forum here at the, at the library. On the 19th, we'll, it's my goal to bring back all of that feedback for the board's information needs. And then, and, and along the path and any meetings that we have, whether in the property committee meetings of the board or the work session or voting meetings up until that vote, to take any additional questions that the board may have. With that, that ends our presentation here this evening. Mr. Gryse and I are now available to take any questions that you might have. Any questions? Ms. Graff?
I know, surprise, surprise. Could you, Dr. Zerby, explain in the motion that you're proposing, you talk about engaging the architect? Can you explain the process for us to get to the point where we can engage an architect? Just so people are aware.
Sure. As presented earlier in the process, in, in this presentation this evening, we issued at the beginning of February an RFP for Architectural Services. That, those architectural services, RFP is up on the district website. The responses were, I believe, due today. Those responses are on the RFP have an outline of what the process is. That process includes several interviews, obviously, a review of, of the document proposals. And once we have a recommendation from the committee through that process, it will come before the board for a recommendation on, likely, March 26, the same date you would vote for, for the, a pathway forward. And therefore, once the architect is approved by the board, the architect, the owner's rep, solicitor, when, when needed, not, not, not often, but, but maybe needed as part of, a part of this process, along with the administration, will coordinate activities led primarily by the architect, supported and overseen by the owner's rep, to engage our students, staff, and school community in gathering greater detail around the program of need to create what it, what it would look like for a 308,000 square foot facility and what would be included in that more specifically, and how that might look and where that might be located and, and how that might be located and, and how exactly are we addressing the, the matters associated with the recommendations from the Campus Planning Committee? We would then likely, and again, this is, you know, I'm not speaking for the architect at, at this point, because I don't know who that is. But I would imagine then, based on option 4B, which would be called, I would consider the, you know, the, the greatest potential of, of solving and, and future opportunities, we would create a second plan that would look more like at the 345,000 square feet and then likely come with a plan between those two, or maybe even one less than the 308,000 square feet plan. It, it all depends on, as we go through the process and do the investigatory work over that six-month period. But generally speaking, this is a process led by an architect, which the board will, will likely have a recommendation to approve at the March 26 meeting. We would then begin, you know, organizing the timelines, processes, keeping the board apprised of that progress along the way and, and certainly look to be, be providing you a recommendation as the, the three recommendations as it's outlined in the, the vote, the motion for March 26. I hope that, there's a little long-winded response, but I wanted to be thorough in, in making sure that you understood not only how we come to determination of an architect, but also knowing that the architect and how we process things going forward.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Cleary?
On, on the previous slide, Dr. Zerby, the red light, green light stuff?
This one?
Sorry, no, I must have.
Here?
Slide 44?
No.
That one? Okay. The heat map, we, just for reference, this is called the, the heat map. It gives us an idea of the priorities and, and related to the options that are being, the pre-conceptual options that are being presented here.
Mr. Gryse may have said this already, but I just, just in case, the red is can't do. We can't, we can't accomplish those in, in the particular option, is that correct?
Correct. It's much more difficult under that option to accomplish that priority. Yep.
And yellow is partially?
Yellow is we can address it, maybe with some improvements that we're doing, but not fully. And then green is yes, we've definitely hit this priority with this option. Yep.
Ms. Cleary, any, any other questions?
No.
Mr. Mersky?
I have two questions, one's related to this chart also. So what metrics were you using to determine the color?
You know, a little bit more certainly of, of experience. I mean, what we know can definitely address. It's a bit subjective, to be honest with you, but it's certainly, I think, provides a pretty comprehensive picture overall of where the priorities can be attained and where they'll suffer.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I assume, but in the options one through four, you assume $215 per square foot for renovations and $370 for new construction? What range would you, I assume that's based on current market conditions. So what range would you estimate for both of those? Because I'd expect a little wider range for renovation, but just plus or minus 5%, 10%?
So for, for new construction, certainly within the 360 and certainly approaching 400 in some cases. So 370 would be a pretty good kind of midpoint at this point. Similarly, for the renovation, you know, we tried to kind of hone in on, are there limited structural improvements? Are we talking about building finishes as in ceilings and floors with some MEP work included? So that's a mid-range as well, that 215.
How much of a range? So I understand there is a range, but I mean, we plus or minus 50%, plus or minus 20%?
Say 20%.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, two quick questions. The furniture and fixtures, I don't, I, I think you mentioned it, but I don't really see where it's described as an actual cost in these examples.
So in this case, the soft costs, which are, does this work? So under the first black horizontal line, thicker black line, that gets into the soft costs?
I see it.
So at this point, that FFNE furniture, fixtures, and equipment, that would include, again, furniture, classroom furniture, technology, those types of things.
Okay. Is there any, any additional costs along here that is not included? I know you mentioned the permits from the township and things like that. I remember going through the Arrowhead. You tried to be all-in with everything.
We did. At this point, it's a percentage of the hard cost, again, at this conceptual point. Again, once we get into design and heading into the bidding phase, you will certainly have a breakdown of soft costs that are very detailed. Township permits, legal fees, financing fees, if there are any, you know, construction testing, testing, adjusting, and balancing, all the services that are separate from the construction contracts that still need to be incorporated.
So you're including site work? For example, if the admin building in option four is knocked down, that is included cost, all those associated costs beyond the, the high school itself?
So you'll, you'll see under option four, 4A or 4B, again, a site work allowance, that jumps all the way up to $15 million. Again, at this point.
It's covering that type of stuff?
Until we have a geotechnical investigation to understand the soil conditions, what the potential parking lot layout could be, the access road configuration. I mean, all of those factors need to be considered with heading it to design. So at this case, i- i- at this point, $15 million lump sum is, is what we're.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Press. One last question on the zone four that was a little confusing to me. In the previous options, you know, the admin building was reused or the high school was repurposed. And here, we are not repurposing any portion of the high school for the admin building and the admin, admin building would be incorporated in new, new construction?
Options three and four both would take in the administration building as part of that high school structure, yes.
So that 308, an option for a 308,000 square, 308,000 square feet would include the admin building?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Graff?
Okay, so while we're on the 308,000 square feet, I just had a question around, the current high school is at 320,000 square feet. Can you provide a little information around why the estimate for 4A is a smaller building than what we currently have?
So the, the, according to PDE calculations in terms of, of the space, the, the current high school would be situated for 2,150 students, whereas we currently have 1,600 students. So to understand that a future building would, would likely not necessarily require the, the same amount of space and would require less. And that's where the 308,000, based on an initial, I'll call it pre-conceptual count of the spaces and the utilization of spaces and not necessarily having every teacher having their own home base or home classroom using what's called a PLC, a center for congregation of, of staff when they're off teaching cycles.
So I've, I've also heard very clearly that some of our classrooms are undersized. So we're going to size our classrooms up and we're going to end up with less square footage, which makes me think that maybe we're going to lose some, what I would call not classroom learning space, like hallways or unused areas of the building? Is that an accurate assessment?
To give you another example, in the 308, it's, it's thought that, you know, we wouldn't have an eight-lane pool, we would have a six-lane pool. And the auditorium wouldn't hold all 1,700 or 1,600 students. It would be a, a smaller, you know, footprint, certainly enough for the, the, the performances. I think it's important for us to recognize that there, there are, there are a lot of extra work that needs to get done in order to really give you a true picture of the program for which a design needs to fit the, the program. These are really conceptual estimates based on the count of rooms on a map. And, and not, and not our, and not our full, you know, discussion with staff regarding the, the needs, so I.
So the square footage estimate that we're using to, as the basis for the cost is based on the PDE required amount of square footage per student with our current student body estimated. Is that accurate?
Well, well, what, what's, what's accurate is that there would be no educational space constructed below the PDE minimum, which we currently have right now.
Okay, but that doesn't answer my question. I mean, I hear what you're saying. I guess my question is, where did the 308,000 square feet come from?
It came from a count of the, of the existing classrooms and an estimate of the future classroom spaces that are needed, as well as the estimate of the size of the pool, the size of the administration building inside there, the size of the auditorium, and the sizes of other instructional spaces. So for example, in, in some, in some suggestions, for example, 385, there's, there's multiple LGIs estimated in that particular calculation. In the 308, there's only one LGI calculated in the presentation. We can certainly, we can certainly provide the board a breakdown of what the difference is between that, but to, to give you that specificity here this evening on the podium, I, I just don't have it in front of me.
I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is. I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is that the square footage, if I'm correct, Mr. Rice, that forms the basis for the cost.
Correct.
So when I look at option three and I see 168,000 square feet of renovation, plus 118,000 square feet of addition. Now, if I add those together, I get more square footage than my new construction high school at 308,000 square feet. Now, the simple answer, which I was thinking it was, was that a new high school, new construction is, is structurally designed for optimal space for our students and the learning environment, and therefore it's more efficient. But that's not the answer that I just got. The answer I got was a little bit more convoluted than that. So I just want to make sure I understand, are we getting a bigger building in option three? Or are we getting a more efficient building in option four, but it's actually physically smaller?
Yes. Yes. So yeah, I mean-
Okay.
You've, 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 you've certainly hit on it. I mean, we're, we're definitely talking about prioritizing the educational aspect of the program, right? And making those spaces right sized without having a footprint that is sprawling as it currently is. It will certainly be more efficient, more compact. So yes, the, that option of three is larger. You're also getting more efficiency with new construction with option four A, even with four B.
Okay. And then my other, the other point, I guess, I just want to be clear and maybe you can answer this question as well. When we're looking at these five options really, because we have four A and B, all of the assessment cost approach is consistent across each of the five options. So whether, you know, to Mr. Mersky's point about the cost per square foot, whether that cost is increased by 20% or decreased by 20%, that 20% would be across the board for all of the options. So this information is really giving us a relative cost for each of the five options. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that's correct. Again, until we know the exact extent of renovations, I mean, it's, it's kind of hard to say that this renovation option is directly related to this one if the scope isn't the same.
Right.
So it's kind of tough to answer, but it's, it's certainly a comparison. We think we're pretty close, or at least in the ballpark. It's not as if this is just, you know, a complete, a complete guess and, and only a comparison.
Right.
I think we're getting closer, but it certainly is a comparison across options. Yes.
And the renovations are really based on the square footage of the areas of the building that we're going to renovate, based on the actual design that we have currently. So you've at least based them on a square footage that's accurate for the design we currently have at the high school, right?
Correct. So, so again, the only, the only unknown then at that point is, for example, I mentioned under option one, we're scaling back in this particular wing of the building because it's newer, we're not anticipating quite as extensive renovations there, so that was factored into it. Until we go through that exercise for each space, it, it's kind of, it's difficult to have a wide range of, of costs until we really dig into each individual area.
I got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Steele?
Yes, thank you. I, the first question I actually have, I don't know, either of you might be able to answer it, and it's going off of what Kate was asking, and it's simple and it's not available today, I understand, because I know it's all in planning and estimation. But one of the things, like thinking about flexibility and planning for the future, for instance, a lunch and learn model, if that were ever down the road, something we would consider, is there a difference between the 308,000 and the 345,000? Just to conceptualize, since there's estimated money here. Does that make sense? Like, is, is it required to do the 345,000 to make sure that we can do that option versus the 308?
I, I think what's important in, in either of those options is recognizing that lunch and learn should be included in either of those options. How that actually looks might be different, but certainly based on the feedback we received from the campus planning committee, the work from the administration over the last year and a half with investigation into lunch and learn, I, I can't see why we wouldn't want to include that in both of those option four A and four B.
That's excellent. Thank you. And then just the other question, just about the numbers for any of the renovation questions, just because they're here and I just wanted to see the construction contingency, that 5%. When I see that, I, and I know when you do a renovation, you never know it's behind the walls, right? Our pool is leaking thousands of gallons of water. I don't know what the actual number is, I might be wrong, but it's a lot of water and I know that water is bad and it goes places. Does that 5% take possible damage from that because it's going down into account? Or could that possibly drive up the cost of that contingency plan, contingency money?
You're saying specifically to address the pool?
Not just to address the pool, just like that kind of damage. I know that water is bad and it can damage things and it's going somewhere. Does that make sense? So like-
It does. So I mean, at this point, it would, it would encompass any type of unknown, whether it's, let's say we're excavating for storm piping and there's a rain and a sinkhole develops on site-
Okay.
And we need to fill the sinkhole. Those, just those types of, of unknown conditions, whether it's new or ren, I mean, they're certainly possible in any scenario. Specifically with site development, we like having contingency just for the reason I said. Sinkholes are not uncommon in this, in this region, so it's always good to have something built in if, if, for no other reason, right? So just at this point especially, it's really, really critical to keep in mind contingency. As we get closer to the end of design and bidding, once we really have the scope defined, maybe we can back that down at some point. Certainly tonight's not the night that we're going to start doing that.
Oh, I was just wondering if it was like, you know, water going places could mean that we, that you find things. And I was just wondering if that would include that in that calculation, if 5%?
It's really, as I said, any unknown.
Any guess? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Alston?
Yes, thank you for this presentation. I have three questions. One is because the sewer treatment hookup with Lower Providence and the renovation of the transportation building and its existing footprint are listed sort of separately, but are consistent across all the recommendations, could we please get an estimate of those costs separately? If possible, just so that, because that's an apples to apples that we could back out or know what those costs definitely are? That would be possible to do?
We, we have that and we have that in a report done by a civil engineer, so we can provide that to the board.
Okay. Just because it struck me, those are consistent.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't put it in this report, but it's, it's, it's a document that members of the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee received and they had some estimates on how that might, might proceed.
Okay, super.
Great question, thank you.
And my second question is regarding the feedback and next steps in decision making and specifically the open public forums on scheduled for February 29th and March 11th. You said they were in the library, they will, they will be in the high school library?
In the high school library, yes.
And will tours of the schools be available at those, those times? I, I think that they should be to, for the public interest.
That's a great suggestion. We didn't originally consider that, but thank you and we'll, we'll add that too. We, we'll, we'll do the open public forums and then we'll take tours after the facility. Thank you.
Yes, and so, and my third question is, it was touched on a little bit, but I think a lot of the members of the public might not know what lunch and learn is and might not, might not know how changing the facility, however it's changed, actually impacts the programming that we do. So I would like to see added to the heat map, I would like to see, as well as separately addressing the scheduling impact and how that might impact our academics with the lunch and learn, as well as how could it impact or increase our participation in athletics and our activities, our music program as outlined and, and as it goes with our strategic plan goals. I would just like more education on that. I, I would like, because right now, I don't think the heat map would show that any of those goals are possible with the existing building and because we're not necessarily getting to, only getting to a new building, we are getting to new programming, we're getting to a new way of learning and teaching and engaging, and that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, and, and in all fairness, it's, it's, while it's outlined in, in the priorities like educational space improvements, it's not clear. And so I think we'll do a couple of things. One, we'll, we'll draft a report on what lunch and learn is and we'll provide that on the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee website so that we can reference that. And then, and then secondly, we can certainly, you know, add, you know, some additional information if, if, after we review this and after we get some other feedback, we might be able to update this along with lunch and learn being included.
To talk about the scheduling flex, flexibility that it would afford.
Okay, thank you very much. Other, other questions? Ms. Perdue?
While we're on this, I have several questions, but while we're on this, I was a bit disappointed to see that option one, two or three still don't get us, we don't have anything showing green when we think of our educational space improvements. I just find that hard to believe considering, I mean, there's still a significant amount of renovation considered in all the options provided. So I'm just wondering if that's something that you can provide some clarification on?
So for, for one and two, the renovation within basically the existing footprint, right? So we're essentially gutting and, and improving existing spaces. We're not creating those larger educational spaces, we're not providing collaboration spaces for the most part. You might get that in option three where we have kind of that, that hybrid approach that I mentioned, there's some existing building footprint, there's a portion that's a new building footprint, maybe that can really capture some of those educational improvements with collaborative learning spaces. So, you know, that's, that's kind of why the first two were red and, and option three was orange. If you want to slide orange into option two, maybe, okay. But, you know, in general, it's, it's going to be tough to really create those educational impacts under that existing footprint of the building.
I mean, I find that, I mean, that's fine, but I mean, I think when I look at option one, two and three, and I look at even considering the first, maybe first four priority items that we have here, I feel like option one, two and three can be put in a way that can address those needs, but it just, it's interesting that it's not showing that it's doing, I mean, maybe with option three, but option one and two seems like it really don't address a lot of what we're looking for. And it's, it's interesting because we toured some, one of the schools that was renovated and I think they do have, you do see some gains when you think about educational space or new curriculum opportunities, but that's why, I just thought that was interesting. I do have some questions in reference, so I think there was a mention about the parking. And I, I wanted to ask, based on the schools, that the three schools that we toured, do every student of driving age have the ability to have a driving spot?
Of the schools that we participated on the tour with, I can't confirm that at this moment in time.
Okay, I'm just thinking that may be very difficult, just because even, even of the driving age, not every student is able to drive on campus or have a car to drive on campus. And I saw something the slides referenced and I don't think, I don't think that's an issue that Mathacton is going to be able to resolve, even with fixing our infrastructure parking. I don't know if we can.
Well, well, I think that that's part of the, the recommendations. And if, for example, you would look at, at option four, considering that, that there would need to be a, a new structure put on the campus and then that the old structure would then be removed as part of a, a part of the end process, it's possible with, you know, you know, going vertical versus horizontally, we can gain not only additional parking on this campus, but also additional green space.
Okay, and then I have, I'm working my way back, based on the superintendent's recommendation, you have on provide public input on concept design. Is that part of the process that's highlighted in the next slide as speak to the feedback and next steps? At these public forums, is that where you're expecting to get the public input on the concept design? Will you have concept designs by then?
I'm sorry, Ms. Perdue.
No, it's okay. I think it's the slide, it's the last two slide.
Okay. And just, just so I don't, could you just repeat it again? I apologize.
So on your superintendent's recommendation, you have provide, provide for public input on concept design, right? On the last slide, when you look at the feedback and next steps, you highlight some dates on here. Is that at those forums?
They're different.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so, so the ones that are on the last slide are the ones that are going to be between now and March 26th. And then the one that I'm talking about in terms of the recommendation, I believe on the slide prior to the last slide, is additional feedback on the concepts that would result from the six months of work with our architect, owners rep and teachers and staff.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that clear, just because I didn't think you'll have that information.
Yeah, we, we, we absolutely won't. So it'll be, you know, again, if, if the, the board votes on the motion as it's currently provided, we would begin starting that process. Obviously, also if the board approves an architect on the 26th of March, we would then be, be able to begin that process, you know, create a timeline, create a, create the process, and we would certainly need the architect to lead that and it would be, you know, they're, what they're commonly familiar with, with doing to create these design concepts. And six months from now, we would schedule a special meeting of the board, invite the community and have an opportunity, actually before the, the presentation, to have the, the members of the community walk through and see those, those concepts and be able to weigh in so that we have enough information coming to the board for consideration on, the next steps after those concept designs are presented.
Okay. And then on slide 39, when you talked about, was it discussed about option one and two? And I think I heard option one addressed the largest scope in a shorter period of time. So I think we said three to four years. Is that the same timeframe for option two? So slide number 39.
So I believe option one, if I recall, right, so that renovation period of two years is what we would anticipate from, you know, when contractors actually come on site to complete the renovation. Obviously, again, the phasing is a big part of that. How many students can we move at a time? How much square footage can we take over at a time? All that would need to be vetted, but, you know, I think generally a two-year duration for that would be reasonable. Option two, again, has some partial additions, so just taking into account any complications or any specific time of year impact that might affect the construction operations. Again, these are, these are estimates at this point, but factoring in the new construction in addition to the complete renovation, we added six months to that timeframe, so that would be a two and a half year process. Option three is where it really gets invasive with the amount of existing building that is being demolished and reconstructed with new construction. So in that case, that timeframe was actually increased another six months up to three years.
Okay. And then my last question is really about the transportation building. I think of all the options, they're listed as in place renovation. Can I just get, why is, why are we not, why wasn't that considered just a, I'm just wondering what the discussions were in reference to the transportation building?
Why it's recommended to be renovated rather than some other option like moved off campus? Okay. So yeah, in, in, in some of the recommendations from the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee, some of the, the considerations that they included was to remove, you know, the, not only the, the drivers, the buses and the garage and to find an alternate location. The, the likelihood of being able to, to do that without significant, you know, The likelihood of being able to do that without significant, you know, land acquisition and then renovation on the property to accommodate that is likely, and previous estimates were provided to the board anywhere from, you know, seven to nine million dollars to just make that transition, not even to construct a new facility, but to do all the land development associated with a property, to put the macadam down for which the buses and the cars would need to be on. So we looked at a couple of different places, including Audubon Elementary School property as a potential site. We certainly looked at some other land that might be available in the given community. Certainly, we've done some investigatory work in property only in Warrsester and Lower Providence, for which is already macadammed, like, for example, industrial parks. Certainly, some of those, especially in Warrsester, would take us to the fringe of Warrsester Township. And while that might be suitable for the busing and transportation to be located there, it would create an exponential increase in transportation costs over the long haul, which would likely not be beneficial for the district in terms of its overall operations going forward. We will, I have actually been working on trying to find a suitable temporary location for the transportation, because it's likely that our buses and our drivers are going to need to be off campus if new construction is, you know, a future potential. They're going to need to be off campus in order to create the swing space for construction supplies and mobilization to take place, as well as to provide for parking, given the likelihood of taking up some parking spots as a result of new construction. So with that said, there's a lot involved in the conversation with the transportation facility, but it's currently on in these high-level pre-conceptual concepts that we keep the, as an end result, keep the transportation facility on the campus. Any other questions, Ms. Cancro?
You know, I just wanted to, I go back to the heat map, and I understand there's a lot of interpretation there because it's subjective, but there is definitely reasons of why the campus safety improvement is red. In option one, we're still going to have 20 different entryways that we can't really, you know, we have it secured by our security. But I do think, like, there are reasons why we're not going to get the educational space improvements that we're looking for based on our campus committee that came together showing, you know, flexible space, having the tech department all together when we're trying to do a fab lab. So I do think there is reasons why, but I definitely understand why, like, it's just interpretation of, we should have it. We're fixing $90 million worth. But what we're just really doing is, to be honestly, is taking down the walls, getting the HVAC fixed and putting back the walls. And I think that's pretty, that's what I interpret that as. And so I think we're not offering the flex, like, the flexible spacing and the lunch and learn atmosphere. So we could technically go back and just put number, educational space, number one, refer to the goals of what we want as considered educational space improvements and those kind of things. But we are improving educational space by improving the HVAC alone, because the kids will actually hear the teachers. I mean, right? So I mean, I mean, this is the unfortunate thing that we're dealing with in it. You know, and I think these are opportunities for us to have discussions and true discussions with each other, so we all understand, the public can hear us. So this is where a work session, the next meeting, again, the work session, again, that we speak about where we feel. And so take this information, because I definitely, the price tag is definitely a pause for me, because, you know, in truth, I would love to see a new build, you know, and to provide an educational experience and a community experience that we can all really grow with together with our students and where we are in our future. But that's a big price tag, right? So I just feel like we definitely need a moment to look at that and realize that the option one, $90 million to just get some things fixed, and it's truly the air quality in our buildings, I look at that. And so the other thing I would say also is that I did go on those tours that we discussed, if we could just get those costs outs of what was their cost, what they got done for the new build, I know we're not going to compete with Upper Marion, and I'm not looking for that. And that is definitely the state of the art. I know inflation in the next five years, what it's going to look like also. So I know the cost of Upper Marion now is not what it's going to be like in five years. I understand that. But I think it just gives us a little bit of something to refer to, like, even a further, some additional new bills that were recently done in the area would help us put this into relative terms. So thank you for putting this together. I think it's pretty concise, and I think it'll give the community full detail of where we've been and where we are now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for members of the board? Mr. Mersky?
Just one clarifying question. I think I heard you say that although the movement of the sewer plant is recommended, the costs are not reflected in any of these cost estimates. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. And as I mentioned to the question, I believe, Ms. Austin, is we have a report that was done that includes a cost range and about the length of piping, you know, a pump station, all the certain things necessary needed for that. So we will certainly provide that.
Okay. No, that's, I just wanted to clarify, that's what you were saying. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Ms. Cleary?
It's included, right? It's just not broken down? Because I think Ms. Austin asked...
I got, I think I got confirmation from Mr. Grace.
So the hope would be that under the option four, under new construction with that $15 million site number, that there would be some costs that would cover decommissioning, demolition, grading. It's certainly not a separate line item in here under options one or two, or even three for that matter. Again, this, we're talking very, very, very high conceptual level.
So sorry. So I think, I think Ms. Graff and I might be in the same place. So it, part of it might be included in here just by the numbers?
We'll say for parity, it's not included under any option at this point.
Okay. And Dr. Zerby, you're going to send that out to us to, thank you.
And can I also...
We'll also be posting that on the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee website.
Can I also ask then that on each option where it says sewer plant, move off site as part of the included items, starting with slide 40, that needs to be resolved and removed from the slides. If you flip back to 40, we'll see it on there or any of the slides. All four options say sewer plant, move off site as an included component.
Okay.
So I think we just need to remove it off of those lists there so that we know it's not included, and then also remove it from...
Well, let me ask you this, and I think it might be best if we take those estimations from that report and add them onto the chart and then update everything. That would be the most appropriate process.
Either way, whichever way, if you're not including it, we should make sure it's reflected. Thank you. And the other thing I did want to just note is, I know pulling these estimates together was a huge amount of work, and I just want to say thank you to Dewey for doing that. I'm sure you didn't have a ton of time to do this. And while I know we're nitpicking you a little bit here, I do think that they're really solid, and they give us a framework for us to make a decision, which is super helpful. So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. We're happy to do it, to provide whatever kind of guidance you guys need. So we're here. Use us. Thank you.
There are no further questions. Thank you for your time this evening. And in just a minute, we'll continue on with the rest of the meeting. Thank you, Josh. And just for a note, if there's anyone in the public that came this evening for the presentation on the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee, and you'd like to leave now, you certainly can. We'll just give everyone like two minutes to exit if they see fit. Otherwise, you're welcome to certainly stay for the remainder of the work session. Again, there are no votes being taken this evening, and these matters will be with the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee. We'll be back on the table for the board's consideration at the March 26 meeting, but will likely be part of our discussion, which will be videotaped at every work session and voting meeting up until that point. So we'll just give everyone about a minute, and then we'll proceed on with the rest of the meeting. Continuing on with the meeting, we have some presentations, the Spirit of Methacton Award with Dr. Roberts from Arrowhead Elementary School. Also, any additional updates that we have between now and next week will be presented on Methacton High School Campus Planning Update. We will have the committee reports, and then we will move into public comment on action items next week. We have the board minutes, and then we have fiscal items. Mr. Bicker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. This month, for your approval, we have the list of bills, the treasurer's report, budgetary transfers, 9D food service to approved Methacton school districts, transition to pay schools for the point-of-sale or POS system used by the cafeterias in July 2024, the annual cost of $6,615. 9E, the MCIU membership services agreement, the budget for the 24-25 year, $1.5 million roughly, with Methacton's contribution amount of $73,293. This represents a decrease from Methacton of $107 from last year. The facility use rates, approve the administration to adjust this year and future years' costs for pass-through expenses associated with the district facilities. Under 9G, we have two items for the Arcola Roofing, approved Jotun Inc. of Dalran, New Jersey, total bid of $2,888,000, I'm sorry, $2,881,28, which includes the base bid amount of $1,664,139 as selective alternative number one. Total cost, as said, was $2,88,128. And approved Mark Sobek Roofing Consulting of Luzern, PA, to be the inspection services for the Arcola Roofing Project at a cost of $55,560. And then we have finally 9H, master plan 2025, approved KCBA architects to prepare the Woodland Elementary, I'm sorry, Warrsester Elementary School, front entrance construction work, office reconfiguration, and HVAC mechanical in the new areas of construction plan for the summer of 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Bicker. Any questions from members of the board to my left? Any of the fiscal items? Seeing none. To my right, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, Mr. Bicker, I believe that the item 91, the point of service to school pays transition, that's actually an increase over the cost today. Can you reference that cost and why?
The current cost is about $2,200. The annual cost for the new one will be $6,615. The reason we're looking to do this is the current POS system does not have the dynamic features that the one we're looking at right now. Some of the features that we're looking at and was presented to the home and school and various cafeteria staff include the ability to have real-time funds added to the student's account, so they don't have to wait overnight batch processing, which we have right now. There's also the ability for parents to select items that they do not want their children to purchase or limit them by the day. Overall, the system right now uses my school, my school account, and we use FSS. So there are two different systems. So the one you put the money on, the one you actually run in the cafeteria, so they have to sync up overnight. By this, it'll be one system, one area touching. The cafeteria, again, the cafeteria staff, technology, my department, and the home and school all looked at it. It's head and shoulders better than what we have right now.
It also provides parents a number of opportunities to pay for lunch, not just one process as it is today.
Thank you. And then item 9H, master plan. So we are going out for RFP on architects, but we're approving KCBA at this point. Would it be best to table this one until the RFP is completed?
The matter, I think the matter was discussed at the property committee meeting. Ms. Graff, do you have any comments about what was discussed there?
Yes. So this is for ongoing work that will be done for Warrsester Elementary renovations. So we're going to use our in-house established architect for this work. It is not a capital project like the high school project will be. So we are going out for bid on the capital project for the high school, but in this case, we're using our in-house established architecture firm.
And I think if, and I don't know if this was discussed at the meeting, but the type of work that we're asking for here is similar to that work that was done for us by this architect for Eagleville Elementary School. And the actual designs of both buildings, both Warrsester and Eagleville, are often considered, you know, sister, brother buildings, and have many construction similarities. Any other questions to my right from any fiscal items? Seeing none. On the left, Ms. Steele?
Yeah, I'll be real quick. I'm really glad that Mr. Winters asked for some clarification on 9D, only because I have a child who has made it rain ice cream, and hearing what is coming sounds fantastic. So just want to say thanks for that.
Any other questions, Ms. Austin?
Just also on 9D, I'm sorry, because I was out for a second. The types of payment that are accepted are electronic payment, but also still cash and check?
Yes, and credit card. And credit card.
And credit card and cash and check.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on fiscal items? Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to personnel items. Dr. Sergini?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Good evening for the consideration of the board this month. There are the following personnel items. Two resignations professional, both for retirement, Megan Fuga, health and physical education teacher at Eagleville and Warrsester Elementary Schools, who has provided 35 years of service to the district, and Sarah Reed, second-grade teacher at Arrowhead, who has provided 16 years of service to the district. Megan and Sarah exemplify the very best of the dedication and commitment to our students for which our teachers are known. The positive impact they've had on generations of students will no doubt continue for years to come, and we thank Megan and Sarah and wish them very well in their retirement. We have one resignation classified, Mitchell Ashcraft, bus aide. We thank Mitchell for his service to Methacton, and we wish him well. Four job descriptions associated with the findings and recommendations of the communication audit, with an update to be provided to the marketing and digital media specialist's job description, further identifying the marketing responsibilities of the position as discussed this evening. Three employments classified, Jared Roffling, paraprofessional two at Skyview, Mark Dregone, second shift custodian at the high school, and Joseph Gallo Jr., second shift custodian at the high school. We welcome Jared, Mark, and Joseph to the Methacton family. Two changes of status classified, Parvati Sevishami from recess assistant at Woodland to paraprofessional two at the high school, and Danielle Venezia from PCA at Woodland, the second shift custodian at the high school. We thank Parvati and Danielle for taking on these new roles. Three uncompensated leaves classified, Robert Mitchell, monitoring assistant at Arcola, Marnie Udis, personal care assistant at Skyview, and Colleen Derfler, paraprofessional two at Eagleville, for the dates noted. Supplemental contracts for instructional software support specialists, the curriculum instruction and assessment and pupil services departments, activity sponsors, chaperones, spring coaches, and outdoor education. And additions to the classified substitute list, Stephen Kohler, Natalie Adams, Shannon Richardson, Vince Rosato, and Joseph Ruby for casual on-call custodians, and Gabriella Slater, support staff casual on-call. We welcome Stephen, Natalie, Shannon, Vince, Joseph, and Gabriella. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Any questions for Dr. Sergini to my right? Seeing no questions right to my left, Ms. Steele?
Yeah, I just want to be real quick. Just, I just want to add, because my own child was taught by Ms. Reed, and I'm glad for her for retirement. She's a fantastic educator, had a big impact on my kid, and I'm sad to see her go.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Sergini on personnel matters? Seeing none, we'll move on to... Seeing none, we'll move on to curriculum and programs. There's no action items for the board's consideration. And then on item 12, policy, Dr. Regina.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. There's a few items for the board's consideration and reviewing first read. The first read items for discussion, the first one is 332 working periods. And there is some additional language to the working periods language from PSBA, and it really is reflective of the new Act 56, which allows school districts to now decide between the 180 workdays and the 990 hours. So they're just reflecting that language and policy, just to make sure that's covered. 333 Professional Development. The update here is in these policies, there's often references to the Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations, which that position no longer exists in the district and is filled by Dr. Sergini as the Assistant Superintendent. So we're just renaming those within policy to be more reflective of our organizational chart. And we also had to add a second year of induction, which is the mandate from the state that we have to do for new teacher induction. And then 337 Vacation Notable Language here, just kind of cleaning up the, under the word authority, to be more reflective of our current practices in the district. And those are my updates for this evening.
Any questions to my right for Dr. Regina? Seeing none to my left? Seeing no questions. Thank you, Dr. Regina. Next on the agenda is item 13 under Other. As I mentioned earlier this evening, eSports, approve eSports as an official club of Math Acton High School and authorize the administration to proceed with securing space in the high school and the associated equipment, materials, supplies for team competition to commence with the start of the 2425 school year. 13B, approve the gifts and donations, approve a generous gift from the Del Rossi family to War Cester Elementary School for equipment to grow the game of lacrosse in the amount of $1,048. The second item is to approve a generous gift from Karen Karen McDonough to to Skyview Upper Elementary of a French horn for the music program valued at $450. The trips under 13C as listed. Transportation, approve the following first student roster changes. Stephanie Borkowski, approve under 13E, approve the 202425 school year calendar as listed. Under 13F, the high school photography vendor. This is a no-cost district vendor that provides photography services not only to the the high school for things like name badges and for yearbook, but also provides photography services to families in in Math Acton High School. Those are the items under Other. Are there any questions on any of those items? To my right, to my left, Ms. Austin.
Just a comment that I'm so glad to see the outdoor education field trips listed here on the agenda for overnight. Love that. And just a question about the photography services. So so the plan is to, is that that's for the high school, that's not district-wide? Or is that something we're looking at then?
Yeah, so so it's only a one-year agreement and it's designed to with the review that the high school conducted, given the issues that they were facing with the current vendor. This one-year evaluation process will allow them to provide feedback to the other buildings about the potential of, you know, making this company or maybe needing to evaluate other companies to help address, you know, a better experience for for this. One of the major things that I've learned through this process was that this company is going to be able to create a starter entry point in terms of photography packages for families, which is about, I believe it's about $50 less than the current vendor provides, which is a good jumping on point for families who may have been unable to, you know, buy into those packages. So I'm looking forward to that particularly. But this should also address some of the challenges that the high schools had with yearbooks and with sitting and scheduling and all sorts of things that, you know, are the basis for this recommendation.
So the basis, so so it's really about, I mean, like the senior portrait services, is that?
It's portrait services. It's also yearbook, you know, collection of photographs and to help with the production of that.
Okay. And then and and this vendor then would have the capacity. So if we're looking at it as a sort of pilot idea, then this vendor would also have the capacity to. I know one reason we were staying with the current vendor in some of the other schools is just the ease of yearbook, just populating the yearbook with, you know, the photos from the vendor. So just making sure that this vendor also has that capacity of ease.
I I believe it's it's our understanding that in this, there's 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 three to four major vendors and this is one of the four vendors that provide this type of service across the Commonwealth. The important part on this is, you know, once we develop that relationship with them and we get to a point probably mid-year next year with them, we're going to be able to provide that feedback back to the other schools and then actually start a new, I'll call it an evaluation process whereby those schools will likely, you know, hear the opportunities at the lower level that will help support them. And then if that all aligns well, we would then come back with a recommendation to the board for for doing something more than just this one-year pilot. Again, it's a pilot process and any pilot can be very successful. It can be lukewarm and it could be a disaster. In all in all fairness, I think the the high school is in a position to and did the homework necessary to move this thing forward. And we we are looking for a better experience for all.
Yeah, I think that's great because that's not the first time that we've had this topic as a discussion among home and school especially. Thank you.
You're absolutely correct. Any other comments? Ms. Perdue?
So I I wanted to provide some context just because I've had several board members reach out about the 2024-2025 school calendar. And I wanted to provide a summary of where we left the calendar from the February Education Committee. And that was to direct the district to get a little bit more clarification based on the dates requested to be amended for the proposed calendar. And but just actually to have dialogue with community of parents that have reached out in reference to inquiring about having a date placed on a calendar. I believe we had some information. There's been a lot of back and forth about the dates that are in question and several board members do have some questions about it. So I would like the administration, I don't know, Dr. Zerby, if you had information on exactly what information you were able to gain from having a discussion with the parents of the community that requested consideration for a date on a calendar.
Well, just just to be clear, I had one conversation with one member of the community who I believe was at least represented to me, someone who is a leader within the community and might be able to speak on on a larger community behalf. So I just want to be clear that I didn't talk to a number of people. I just talked to one individual. And with that conversation, I I'm very appreciative of of the information that I've gained as part of that. But based on what I I received, it is clear to us that the the day that's celebrated in March of March 30th of 2025 is on a Sunday and and not a day that typically be recognized during the school work week. And therefore, similar to what we've done with other recognition of 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 religious holidays, we did did not, in this particular year, on this particular calendar, recognize that holiday. However, in review of the next seven years, there is likely a number of opportunities within the seven years that we would be recognizing days off during the school year that that would, you know, have a what's called a student holiday as listed on our typical calendar.
About that date, I heard that there's some surrounding school districts that are taking the 31st or observing the 31st for that holiday. Do we have any information as to why they're observing the 31st and not the 30th?
I did not conduct that research myself, but I believe our K-12 DEI counselor is here with us this evening. Ms. Washington, I think you might have done some of that research. Would you mind coming to the podium and see if you could ask Ms. Answer Ms. Chanda's question, please? Thank you.
Yes. Good evening. So I believe you're talking about that Monday. So the day that is observed is that Sunday. So there are districts that when there is a holiday that falls on the weekend, they typically will take off either that Friday or that Monday. And so that's why it's like that.
And Math Acton's practices, if a holiday fall falls on a weekend, we don't observe it, correct?
So I do want to also highlight that we did, I mean, in a relevant to the information done by the district as I did talk to other members of school districts that have approved that date on their calendar. So as far as calendars that are already approved by the board and checking where there were some discrepancies in how the dates are added, my understanding is that those dates are not being added because the holiday is actually on a Sunday, but they're actually, the holiday is actually on Monday. So Monday, the 31st, is when the holiday will be based on the sighting of the moon. And that's why districts that have it on their calendar have had it have it on the calendar for the Monday and it's actually not on a Sunday. So I think what we ask from for the education committee is to get confirmation exactly as far as when that day should be considered and when that day should be included on the calendar. And we decide, we stated that if that day falls on a weekday, we will consider adding that date. So I will still like to ask the administration to consider adding a date because my understanding is that date falls on the 31st. And I believe we have members here that can attest to that, so I do just want to highlight that point. And then there are districts that have the date that are proposing to amend it because they have information that that date changes in 2025.
Are there any questions or comments on on the matters associated with under Other? Ms. Steele?
I I don't know. Alex, maybe, or Ms. Washington, I'm sorry. Ms. Washington, you might know this since I don't know if anyone, if the district, when looking at other school districts, reached out and spoke to the other school districts, but the school districts that are acknowledging the holiday on a day off. I know some of the discussion with acknowledging holidays that happen on a weekend and acknowledging them on a school day. And there was discussion with how does one decide? How does a school district decide? And I'm just wondering if there was any conversation with those districts with how they were deciding which holidays to recognize if they fall on a weekend. That's, I don't know if that happened. If if not, that would make for a good discussion to have.
Yes, that was one of the questions. Their recommendation was to speak with a representative from that community, as our superintendent did. And it was the same decision that they had made. While it can change based on the moon, the understanding right now is that it will be that Sunday.
So it, and I know that Ms. Perdue just said that, but the the discussion was that it it can change on the moon this year. Is that, sorry?
2025.
And, okay. That's what I meant. The calendar we're talking about. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions on matters under Other?
Yeah, I was trying to decide if I if I should weigh in. I mean, I I hear the the comments and I respect them. I just want to make sure that while I appreciate the request and I acknowledge the request and I think what I heard from the district was if the holiday fell on a school day, we have no, we would build it into the to the calendar. I just, my concern is always about consistency between, you know, across the board. I worry, I'm, I think I might be hearing some, well, maybe we make an exception here where we don't normally do that. But we're not doing it for everybody. And I just want to make, I just want, I just want us to think about that, the consistency and the, just something to think about. That's all I have.
Can I just clarify that we're not asking, and I don't know where, I think your comment about maybe we're asking for exceptions or anything. I think this is a holiday that is not fixed on a calendar as far as maybe some other holidays that are. And there's tools and resources that are used to determine that date. And what we discussed and I think what Ed Committee walked away with was that we have the current calendar based on confirmation from those in the community that requested it. If the holiday falls on a weekday, we will honor it, right? So based on the information that we have at hand now, that information says that the holiday falls on a weekday. And that's why I bring it back up. So I don't think it's an exception or we're looking to make exceptions for it. We're looking to be consistent in the ways we add the days to our calendar. So I do just want to highlight that out to the team and that's.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue. That that makes sense. But Dr. Zerby, I thought that from the community member that you spoke to, that the holiday, you were told the holiday was on a Sunday.
That's when the the official observance is, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kankrow?
I want to just bring up, I know, Dr. Regina, I don't want to pull you into it because, but you oversaw the conversation, you're part of the education committee. So I, if you don't mind, Dr. Zerby, I'd like to also just get your, what you did as an administration. I know there were multiple steps in this, so if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind. So I appreciate the separation probably of the two discussions. The the first one is what is the day of observance? And I think that's an important thing that we can define and understand. The other one is, once we figure out what the day of observance is, do we take an additional day if it falls on a weekend? And the Ed Committee came came away with, I believe, and I don't want to speak for the Ed Committee, if it fell on a weekend, then there wasn't the need to take it then on a weekday. And I think all the members of the board agreed at that point. And again, I apologize, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I felt that that was what we came away with. The question was, when does it fall? And so what we were tasked with was trying to find out, is it indeed falling on that Sunday or is it the Monday? So we asked Ms. Washington to reach out to local districts. We received some information from local community members. And the information that that we received was that it was observed on a Sunday. So we felt comfortable with sharing the calendar, as is with Sunday being the day of observance and not falling on a Monday. Again, with the board deciding kind of at a committee that there was no need to extend that to the Monday, we felt comfortable with that proposal.
Any other questions on items under listed under Other? Seeing none, that ends the work session agenda. Turn it over to President Kankrow.
Under 14 is the dates for for the board members' calendars for you to be looked at and referred to. On number 15, is there any old business?
Yes, I'm sorry. I wanted to bring this up just because I think from the Math Acton High School Campus Planning subcommittees, I know we discuss the recommendations made by the subcommittees. But I also know as part, sitting and on part of some of those group discussions, there were items that were brought up by some of the subcommittees that are not captured here. One of them that sticks out on top of my head is actually naming that driveway between Farina and the high school itself. So I do want to say while we're planning for a path forward, that some of those considerations come in because, I mean, whether it's new renovation, whether it's renovation option 1, 2, 3 or 4A, 4B, I think some of those 1, 2, 3, or 4A, 4B, I think some of those those individuals provided good feedback and we should also keep those on top of our minds for it.
Yeah, just to add to that. So it's clear that to this evening, we went over the top 15 recommendations. There are 64 total. And in the final report, all the notes associated with all 64 recommendations are in the appendix by Subcommittee. So it's important that exactly, you know, that the heat map and everything else that we've shown you this evening takes in more into consideration than just the the top 15 items and takes in the world of information that was provided for us. And that'll be all posted on the district website under the Campus Planning Committee sometime tomorrow morning.
Yes. Ms. Craft?
Yeah, I think that's a really great point. I also checked for that. It is in the report on page 12, under finding number 1.9. And it does list the suggestion to call it Warrior Way. And I think that's really an important thing that we've captured all of the items that were brought up, and they are in fact in the report. So I would just recommend that, you know, people take a look at that and they can read all of the detail that was provided by the committees because it was a lot of effort for those people to come out and spend that time. And they came up with some great ideas, so.
Any other old business? Any new business? We'll now move to courtesy of the floor. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comment on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. You could also submit questions via email to information@methacton.org.
Jamalak Warzesther. See, Dave, I was right. I've been telling you for months, new school. I'm right. You should resign. If I was sitting up front right now, I would ask you to tender your resignation. And it's not just because I feel that way. I know stuff. I don't have a half an hour to explain it, so I'm going to have to do it in three minute chunks. You guys are all concerned about Warrior Way. What's the 30-year interest cost on $210 million? What is it? My calculation, and I'm not a mathematician, is 150 million. So that puts you guys at 360. Tell me I'm wrong. Is that included? Is that 210 with the interest included? That's the question you guys should be asking, not like, oh, we're tearing down the walls and putting HVAC in for 90 million. I mean, that's ridiculous. For the first time, we get to see four options. And two minutes after you give us those four options, you make a decision to pick one, just like Arrowhead, same thing. It's absolutely it's ridiculous. That's why you should go. Why is our owner's rep? Good question, Mr. Mersky. Why is our owner's rep giving us recommendations based on his gut and his feeling when he gets a percentage of the overall cost of the project? All the green is up at 210 million. A percentage of 210 million is a nice chunk of change. Dave, you've been planning for a new high school for a long time, 2022. I got some emails I'll read you from 2022, give you a flavor of what was going on you didn't tell us. August 2022, August 7th, set up a meeting with North Penn Superintendent for the 16th. What'd you guys discuss? Your owner's rep apparently is the same owner's rep who was involved in that new high school over there. Maybe I'm wrong. You can you can correct me. August 12th, KCBA's Mike Kelly emailed you for a high school walkthrough to hear your thoughts on a possible new high school, 2022. August 18th, you sent Mike Kelly an email about the high school campus advantages, potential improvements for consideration of a new high school. This is 20 August of 22. October 6, 22, Mike Kelly emails you with the closest local example to what you'd be looking for at a new high school. What the heck, Dave? All that time you kept it a secret, didn't tell us. It's a problem. Here's my favorite. October 27, 22, an email from district staff after you made your little presentation. New high school inbound. You need to go, Dave.
Thank you. If you could state your name and municipality, please.
Brian Reagan, Collegeville. Just a quick answer because I work in the building every day. Upper Marion was 330,000 square feet, 150 million all in. But that would be by other concern as relative to the size. Upper Marion is 330,000 square feet for about 300 less students. So I would be a little concerned at that 308,000 square feet number. And then I just had a quick question before I get to my other comment, which was, in that 308,000 square feet, you're also putting the admin in there too, right? So it's not really 308,000 square feet of instructional space. You're going to lose a certain percentage to admin. So all of that being said, however, I want to make it very clear, I couldn't be more in favor for building a new building. I worked in a renovated Upper Marion Building while it was being renovated many years ago now, and it was an absolute nightmare. And I really encourage you, before you consider any of those renovation spots, please go visit Interborough, which has got wires hanging everywhere out of the ceiling right now because they're in the middle of a massive renovation and addition. And it's scary, quite frankly, when you walk through. And the thought that we would subject our students to that for a two or three-year period, that we would have some students that the vast majority of their high school experience would be with wires hanging everywhere and pay 90 million or 150 million for that, I find that very, very worrisome. And I do believe that for $90 million, you basically would get new HVAC and some new paint, and that's about it. So I really, really strongly encourage you to please consider option four. And I think probably somewhere in between 4A and 4B is probably where it comes out. But I'm very excited to hear about that process. And I know a lot of work has gone into this, and I know it's been talked about for a very long time. And I encourage everybody who allowed us to be a part of the process. I was a part of the planning committee. I felt it was very inclusive. Everyone had their opportunities to go out and see it. And for anybody who is against building a brand new building, please take a tour. Please go see that high school as it exists now and tell me that our students don't deserve a new building. They certainly do. Now, on a separate note that I didn't actually come here to talk about, but I happened to be here when the communications plan was being presented, and I'm the communications person at Upper Marion. So I'm very interested, and I have two students, obviously, that go to Methacton right now, who are very interested in communications programs. So my concern was that you have about a half a million dollar department that is not going to include a student television station. And I find that very worrisome. And you have a television studio, you have television cameras, you have a very expensive digital switcher that most schools don't have sitting in that television studio right now that is going wildly underused. So I please, I don't want you to not do that plan, but if you're going to bring someone in who's just going to do social media and marketing, I would ask that they also have some television responsibilities. You already have all the equipment. You could have a television station right now. Dr. Gravines was kind enough to have me in. I met with her, talked to her about all the things that you could do. I think you have tremendous options for very little money, so I please ask you to consider those two. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. Good evening. There are some issues with the new high school. Several of them are huge. And you'd be replacing a decent high school building with a new edifice. Last month, PFM presented three new money scenarios relevant to the campus planning. The cost to borrow monies for 100, 140, or 180 million. The interest rates are not disclosed and clearly are uncertain today, but likely to rise. The borrow of 180 million is claimed to come at an interest cost of 200.9 million and total payments of 381 million over 30 years. I claim, number one, that that loan example is low enough to specifically avoid a referendum when the real estate tax mileage is over the state debt limit or the indexed limit. And two, that a new high school cost is at least 200 million. In addition, other buildings will require capital spend and further bond spend. I count those as two serious issues, and I respect the law that gives the public control of enormous spending sprees. Recently, North Penn put a $400 million high school renovate and expand expand plan to its voters. They voted no by an 11 to 8 ratio. Today, the superintendent has put forward his recommendation. Not wants and needs, but his recommendation, which seemingly comes out all of a sudden without adequate development of renovation plans. Among the committee's suggestions were numerous side issues, better Wi-Fi, eliminating sewer plant, relocating Farina, replacing the speaker system, more student car parking, better campus flow, campus sidewalks, campus lighting, and finally fixing the pool leak. All side issues. Lacking here are claims that our existing high school is unfixable or unsafe. Renovations are budgeted at about 70 million and reasonable enhancements can be done for another 30 million or less. Let's have a serious professional study of high school renovation details and save some money to spend towards better education. Please drop this.
Thank you so much.
Of everything no.
Hi, if you could state your name and municipality, please.
Yes, my name is Mohammed Fazli and Lower Providence. I'm the mysterious man Dr. Zerbi talked with. Thank you very much, Dr. Zerbi, for calling me and having a detailed conversation with me. Thank you. I really appreciate all of you for taking the time and energy and recognizing Eid as the as the district holiday. From Dr. Zerbi's comment, can I take like, in the future, there will be Eid holiday if it will, at least you be at least school district will recognize Eid as an holiday? Hopefully, that is the case. Regarding the date issue and all that, I think the Methacton School parents, Muslim parents, they sent the whole calendar year of 10 years, and they mentioned the dates and everything. Their plea was if the if the Eid falls on the weekend, then can you recognize it on the one of the weekdays as a holiday, just like TE has done, Perkuman Valley has done, Springford has done, and Great Valley has done? These are all the school districts around us that they have done the same thing as Ms. Washington also elaborated because she has talked to those school districts. There is only one school district around us, as Dr. Zerbi talked to me, which was Upper Marion. And I recommended, Dr. Zerbi, at that time, that please do also talk to other school districts that they are recognizing Eid on the following weekday or a weekday before. So we wanted that this region should be harmonized so that everybody, all the school districts are following this practice. Methacton is the only one. And I think in Upper Marion, as I am talking, there are parents in Upper Marion that are also talking about the school calendar over there right now. Anyway, having said that, I would again thank you for considering Eid for the future holidays for 2025. Our request was also to honor, there are two Eids that we do celebrate. One is after 30 days of fasting, and the other is that we do, which is called Idul Adha, which where we do sacrifice and all that, and we give the meat to the poor and all that. So that is equally as important, but both of them are not on the calendar in 2025 and all that. So we would like to know if what's the decision on the second one? In this 2025 case, I did notice, to answer your question about other religious stuff, which is, you know, I we did notice that, and which is very, very good. And I appreciated, Dr. Zerbi, in my email, that Roche Hashana is is recognized on October 3rd, which is very nice because that's what we also want, diversity, inclusion, and equality. And Yom Kippur is.
I'm sorry, sir. Thank you very much. Sorry about that.
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Sabina Fazli, Lower Providence. I know it's been a long day for everybody, so I'll try to keep it as short and sweet as possible. It has been a pleasure for me, my friends, and my Methacton school-going kids to participate in your school board meetings on several occasions in the past few months. I hope your decisions on incorporating Eid as a holiday will be expeditiously implemented and based on the requests put in by several members of my community. It would resonate with efforts put in and already enforced by surrounding school districts, including TE, Perkuman Valley, and Great Valley, and various others already mentioned by us in our email correspondences with you. Definitely recognizing Eid as yet another holiday, as celebrated by many among us, would be a great way to strengthen equality, harmony, and promote understanding, especially among the youth who are the torchbearers of our society. This is also a way of imparting education. And definitely, it would be reflective of all-inclusive policies in our school curriculum and strengthen the banner of unity in diversity. So it's not just a question of it falling on a weekend and, oh, you don't need to give the holiday. We still need that recognition. So people recognize us as a community, just like we recognize other faiths and their festivities, and we participate in them and we respect them. It would be nice to have those feelings reciprocated. Thank you so much. Good night.
Are there any other?
Good evening. Honey from Mohammed, Warzesther Township. I was just trying to make this quick. I noticed you guys only have one Eid under discussion. There are two. The first is Eid Al Fitra, which is on March, observable March 30th, but 31st, March 30th night, March 31st. I was I'm up here to ask that you follow the other districts and put it on the 31st as they other school districts have on their calendar. The other Eid is Eid Ahad, which is June 6th, which is a Friday. I noticed that wasn't on the calendar either. Both Eids are equally important. I just wanted to make sure that both Eids were represented because in the following years, they will be moved closer into the school year, both holidays. So in 26, it would be more closer to May for Eid Ahad. So I just want to make sure you recognize both holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Nashadari, Lower Providence. So the only thing is about the Eid holiday we are asking, and I think I gave you the whole calendar for the next 10 years. And the calendar mentioned that Eid is falling on Sunday, and we are asking the holiday to the school district on Monday, 31st. So we are not asking anything new. We are asking the same thing that we sent you, a proposal for the Eid holiday that is last month. So apart from that, and we request you to, if we can adjust once in service day on 31st March, that will be easy for our kids to enjoy and celebrate the Eid. Our kids fast the whole one month before, and they don't eat and drink anything from the sunrise to sunset. And they deserve one day as an holiday to enjoy the time with friends and family. So this is our request. So if you can move any in-service day, and similar, the other school district are considering. Ms. Washington mentioned the other school district is doing this because they do for any Eid, any holiday fall on the weekend, they do on the weekday. That's wrong. In January 2021, the January 1st, New Year is on Saturday, but there is no holiday in TE School District on January 3rd. So they don't observe any holiday on January 3rd. So this is not, in my opinion, maybe I'm wrong, but there was no, it's not like that the case that if holiday is falling on weekday, they are celebrating on the weekend. Oh, sorry, if falling on weekend, it's celebrating on the weekday. Oh, sorry, if falling on weekend, it's celebrating on the weekday. So just, and again, we, in the proposal, we asked for two Eid holidays, and we gave the dates for both of the dates. So please consider March 31st and June 6th as a holiday in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for courtesy of the floor? Are there any comments from the Board?
Yeah, I think I have a few. I think there's been some comments made by members of the public with respects to how long we were working on consideration for the high school. And the truth be told, we've been working on this for several years. And in part of the presentation, going back to 2016, we've been working on it. So if it is presented that I've had this secret or some other, you know, certain intent that may have been hidden from you, the public, whatever, I think I've said it a number of occasions where a superintendent of the Mathacton School District, it's important for me to make sure that I understand anything that we're about to, you know, take on in terms of an endeavor. And the last thing I would want to do is create a process within the community to look at the Mathacton High School as part of this Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee process to engage people in something that could never become a reality. With that said, it is true that a lot of discussions with the building administration, with the district administration, with teachers, with architects and other professionals that we've had over the years, talking about what it is that I should be considering. And it all comes back to, don't consider one structure on this campus as the ultimate thing that you need to make a decision on. You need to look at this and create a campus plan that considers all the elements so that in whatever investments that you make, you're making them, and you're ensuring the future investments are going to be built upon those initial investments. So I think it's important, and it's critical for us, to recognize that, yes, there's been a lot of time invested in this. You may not necessarily agree with my recommendation. And while the recommendation may seem like very recent, given any of the new information, it's certainly, the new information isn't something that's made aware by me or my administration prior to showing this. So what I'm trying to share with you is that, you know, we do know certain things in advance of being, and presenting them to the Board. And it isn't without a very good review of the information and the consideration of all the factors that this recommendation is being made. You don't necessarily need to agree with the recommendation. That will all be telling in terms of how we proceed on March 26th. But the truth of the matter is, for all the reasons that I presented, in terms of, you know, creating the greatest potential for this community going forward, it is, in my opinion, worth our due diligence in looking deeper into what that option 4A or 4B could be. And like I said, in that recommendation, that if we needed to scale back or need to do some alternatives to that, we have what's built upon all of that, an understanding of what our teachers need, what our school community needs, and what we could then live with or live without in terms of the future campus plan. In terms of interest rate, all the information on the January 23rd, financial analysis was provided. Certainly, the interest rates are, you know, considered to be current market value, and obviously, that would change as we get closer to the actual borrowing scenario. But in all fairness, all that information was provided. And in terms of having to do a referendum of any sort, certainly, the borrowing scenario, as we presented, would be without requirement for a referendum vote, regardless of the amount of interest associated with the actual borrow. And in terms of the heat map that was presented, it's important to recognize that the question on the floor was, how was that determined? The clear answer from Mr. Greis was that it was based on his experience. That ends my comments.
I would like to just comment that I appreciate the community coming and talking about the calendar. I do want you to realize that we are dedicated to represent everyone in this community. I do think that we, the Board worked along with the administration, with the curriculum, and with the unions that were involved in the decision. It is our commitment in the years going forward, where the, if it falls on a school day, it is going to be acknowledged in those years, like they had provided to us in an email as well. So I just wanted to let you know that we are absolutely 100% dedicated to represent everyone in our community. So where this vote might come, I understand, we respect the ask that you're giving. I truly, I speak for myself, truly respect the ask in coming here to that. And so I think as a, I truly do believe as a district, we did just that. We really, truly do understand what you're asking, and the decisions were made on thorough consideration. So please know that, we do respect everybody in this community. So thank you very much. Does anyone else have to add anything else to? All right. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mr. Winters, do I have a second? Ms. Graff? All right, meeting is adjourned at 10:11. Have a good night, everyone.